Time is now seven o'clock. Call the regular meeting of the Rocky Ford City Council to order. Are our lights on?
Yep, you're good.
Rebecca, will you do the roll call, please?
Barone.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Mosby. Roberts.
Here.
Mullins.
Here.
Mayor Guruley.
Here. And just wanted to note, Councilwoman Mosby did send a note over that she's not going well and that she wouldn't be able to make it to tonight's meeting. You all rise to the judge for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nick, you want to read our admission statement?
My third. Mission statement: To improve the quality of life in the city of Rocky Ford, making it a great place to live and work while strengthening relationships and creating pride in the community.
Thank you. We'll move on to our first public comment. If anyone would like to just counsel on any items not on the agenda.
Yes, my pleasure.
I'm JR, I guess everybody knows me. I just wanted to comment favorably on at least two city council members I saw involved with helping with the flags having taken down on one of them. It's these two guys over here. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Any others on public comment? All right, we'll move down to consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes the approval of council meeting minutes from our May 13 meeting. Could for a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion, Roberts, Martinez, call the vote.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes. Consent agenda is approved. Move down to approval of the agenda. And on here in one, one addition that I'll make is under new business. We'll add item 14.5. And it will be board appointments. So we'll be reappointing, it'll be JR Thompson, Liz Fairchild to the planning commission. And then Cindy.
Cindy A.
And then Cindy Ader to the full commission. So those will be an addition we'll add under new business 14.5. With that, it look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make motion to approve tonight's agenda with the addition of 14.5.
I'll second.
We got a motion from Roberts and a second from Robert Barone.
Martinez.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
And tonight's agenda is approved. We'll move on to our presentations and all. Mr. Steve Cordova to get a draw total concept here as an update on the Osborne subjects.
Well, good evening, everybody. Mayor, nice to see you, council members, those of you who know me, always great to see you again. And for those of you who don't, administration. My name is Steve Cordova. I'm the executive director of Total Concept. We are based in Fowler, Colorado, and we are the developer and owner of the Osborne apartment complex, which is on Elm Street between the two highways, east and west. Hopefully, you've seen that taking shape over the course of the last couple of years. We demolished the old western apartments and have since started building on these Osborne permanent supportive housing units. The completion date is actually October 10th. So we're hoping that that still sticks as a last month. And we meet monthly for a draw request and every two weeks for a walkthrough. At the end of last month, we were just at forty-nine and a half percent complete. So at the end of this month of May, I'm expecting we'll be closer to about fifty-five to fifty-seven percent, if not even sixty percent or more. Right now, you can see they have started doing some brickwork outside. And I know there had been some concern about if there was no work taking place there for a little while because vehicles and people were not visibly seen on the outside, but they were all inside. I get daily reports, we get pictures, and we have two different individuals and consultants monitoring the project, one for our construction lender who is out of Atlanta, Georgia, and one who is our architect and reports to us on a regular basis every couple of weeks. And then I go on site about every other week as well, too. Happy to say that drywall is actually going up in the third floor at this point in time. They'll be moving to the second floor shortly. We'll be getting the first floor stuff drywalled as well and then just continuing moving forward through all the rest of the detailed work until we get to landscaping and all the rest of the stuff. This is a three-story building. It does have an elevator on the south, south side of the building, along with a staircase on the north side. It consists of one-bedroom units and two-bedroom units. There are only about, I think there's about six or eight two-bedroom units, and all the rest are one-bedroom units. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you might have or comments that you might have.
Yeah, question, what do you plan to start attempting applications for?
Yeah. Councilmember Barone, that's a very good question. So this is a permanent supportive housing project, and that means that we have then requested vouchers for every single unit, for every family, every person that moves into there. So the state of Colorado issues those section eight vouchers, and very, because they, they, they basically pay the rent, there is a process they want us to go through as a permanent supportive housing apartment complex, and that is called coordinated entry. So we are working with another group to develop this coordinated entry process, and it is something that other parts of the state also have. What we intended to do is accept referrals from coordinated entry, fifty percent of those, and also the other fifty percent from Valleywide, mental health services, and the general public. The Colorado Division of Housing at this point actually wants us to only accept referrals through the coordinated entry system, which we will push back, and we would like it to be at fifty percent. The long answer is, we are not yet able to accept any applicants yet. It'll have to go through this coordinated entry process. In fact, tomorrow, or maybe, yeah, tomorrow afternoon at about four o'clock, we have a call with the state and a consultant and Valleywide and the other group to talk about services and coordinated entry process. I don't think that we're going to have coordinated entry process in place until probably about August or even September. And then at that point, people will start being referred through those, through those items. We'll create a waitlist and a by-name list, that's what it's called, and then we'll start moving people in based on their acities. Long, long answer, I'm sorry, this is just governmental type processes.
So basically, my understanding, and then, if anybody, I've had a couple of people ask me about it openly, and so basically, they're going to have to, section eight, for me to tell them, section eight people will go through the coordinated entry process through?
So let me make it much easier. What we really want is nobody to say anything. Let us say that, right? You refer them to us no more. Otherwise, it's too confusing for everybody, right? Somebody asks you, do you know how we rent over there? You say, call Total Concept. Go to their website. One of those two answers. We will process them through the system. There's a lot of rules, requirements, screening processes, and for a normal person to try to explain that is just overwhelming, I'm sorry. But the best answer is to say, contact totalconcept.net, right on the website, or call our office at 719-263-5168. And we will start that process.
Alrighty, I wish there was more reading to have.
What else would you like to tell them besides?
Oh, anything, I mean, you're telling me to talk about?
Yeah, yeah, but, and again, it's because it's confusing, right? It'd be like me, who is an accountant, telling somebody how to change their transmission. I get the general idea, but I'm not going to give them all the correct instructions.
I'm looking for some clarification. We've heard a lot of things thrown around, and I get it from citizens, we've heard affordable housing, we've heard transitional housing. What exactly are we housing this?
So, what?
Ooh, I guess.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the Osborne is a permanent supportive housing project. So it's right in its name. It is permanent. It's not transitional at all. Okay? So that's the very first thing. Anybody who says it's transitional housing, it's right in the name.
You said transitional housing.
Permanent supportive housing. I've never said transitional, sorry.
I watched the thing at the college.
Would you like, would you like for me to address him? Please come up and let us have that conversation if you'd like.
Sure.
So it is a permanent supportive housing project, which in its name is permanent. A person is to be there and will have a year-long lease at minimum. All of our properties that are affordable and those that are considered market all have the requirement for a year-long lease. So they are not transitional and they are not temporary. Permanent supportive housing. So they are not transitional, I'm sorry. Your name?
My name's Gary Reed, and you know me through Noel.
I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Yeah, I don't care, if you know me or not. That's a bunch of BS. You said at the county, or at the, at the college, that there was transitional housing for the homeless. Dwayne said it's transitional housing for the homeless. So, who's right?
I'm right. You might be getting confused with?
Well, I'm getting confused because you're screwing everybody around here.
How, how, how are we screwing you?
As a, as a property owner and a landowner, you're charging twice for what I can house one person. So I can house two people for what you charge for one.
That is fantastic. I appreciate that, and I hope you can do more of that.
Well, I can't, because you're sucking out of the system and, and the money's not there.
What system am I sucking?
The HUD system, the same system that everybody else.
If you're going to make comments, let's, let's stick to facts and, you know, ask questions.
There's no facts here, I guarantee you. Watch what you're listening to, because he's bullshit right there.
So I appreciate the comm, the communication, because there is, of course, a lot of information on, on Facebook, a lot of confusion in general that we as an American society have. So I don't take any of that personally, I just understand that we as a society are very confused and angry about anything that might be positive happening in our communities. And that is one thing we are certainly doing. We are able to access the resources, and anybody can access, access those very same resources if you want to go through the process and the steps to do so. So I invite you to continue to pursue those resources because they exist. It's not easy, and it's not simple.
So, no, we're not pulling out the same resources.
So we have to do those very same types of things in order to create the housing that people need in order to be safe, have a place to call home, and yes, there will be an element there for people that have been chronically homeless or at the risk of homelessness. And it's based on a severity scale. So if, there is this form that the coordinated entry process will fill out on behalf of that individual to determine the severity of that individual, so that they might rise to the top of the priority list in the waitlist or in the, in process as well. So for example, like a family will rise to the top, right? Because we certainly don't want children to be having homelessness experiences if it can be addressed. So that was, that is why we have two-bedroom units to address that. The, again, the transitional, or whoever's been saying transitional is not correct. And again, we all use words that don't necessarily mean what we think they mean. It is for people who have been homeless, are homeless, or at risk of homelessness. They come in, they get the supports, and those supports will be in the form of mental health services, some physical care, maybe some dietitian care, and our primary service provider is Valleywide Health Services. There will also be some small components of transportation, and there will also be other types of supports available to them. I would love to be able to get supports in there that include like pet training and dog grooming and all those types of things that we need as families that we don't always have access to. Councilmember Nick, other questions that you have that I can try to?
Well, I guess, I'm not sure you answered what I wanted, because I, I do have personally urged you for transitional, and I'm just trying to understand. You say, well, we're trying to, you know, families can move up the list or whatever, which I appreciate, I get, but, but then your time, you may have wanting two-bedroom units, that doesn't seem to hold a family. I'm a family of two, and the two-bedroom list is very, very tight.
Yes.
But, you know, we've, we've heard, and I've heard from you, I've heard from others, that, and this is where the word transitional comes in, is that we're going to be bringing people who are, who are experiencing homelessness, who are coming out of rehab, who are coming out of prison, and those are the things that I think our community is concerned about, is that we have a large portion of people who, when they hear transition from these facilities into our community, they're concerned. So I guess I ask, is what, what are you guys going to have in place to help alleviate these concerns from the community? I mean, because I know if, if I was being told as a citizen, which and I have been, we're, we're bringing people from rehab, and then I'm sticking them right next to two alcohol facilities. There's a bar club across the street and a restaurant that serves alcohol right there. As a recovering addict myself, that's a bad place to stick them, so.
So I will, I will address your question about bringing people. We do not bring anybody, okay? We are not going out to prisons, we are not going out to any institutions of any type to bring people, okay? These are for people who are in our community. I can't tell you if people from Fort Lyon, or from Lyman, or from Rantone, New Mexico, or Denver, or Colorado Springs come to our area and hang out on the sidewalk or couch surf with friends. There might be, and there probably will be, those types of individuals and people who are couch surfing that now have a place to be. And there will be people who are currently on the street causing fires in your vacant buildings that we will be housing as well. So there is a delicate balance, right, Nick? Do you want people to live on the streets, urinating, defecating, setting fires? Or would you like them to live in a nice environment with supports to help them become stably housed and hopefully become productive members of society? Which one?
Well, I'd love for everybody to have a home. I, there's, there's a lot more to it than that. Let's speak real quick to, when you say affordable and with section eight, what are we looking at numbers-wise?
So when we talk about affordable housing, we call it capital A affordable, because the funding that we're receiving is meant for people who are at fifty percent area median income or below. So by definition, it becomes housing for people, and their portion of the rent will be affordable to them. The way that we're able to do that is that we get that section eight voucher from the state of Colorado. So the rent for a one-bedroom is going to be the payment standard that the state of Colorado allows. It's roughly eight hundred dollars for a one-bedroom unit, okay? If that person's income says that they could afford a hundred dollars, that person pays a hundred. It's affordable to them based on their income, and the section eight voucher pays the rest. The same process that works with your Rocky Ford Housing Authority, same exact process, okay? That is how it becomes affordable. And the second part of your question was?
Ah, I don't, what safeguards are you going to have in place to prevent situations? Again, so we're, we're talking about bringing people off the streets or out of situations.
So here's a very interesting concept, which is called harm reduction. And I was in a conference just last week at the state of Colorado, and they were talking about good techniques for harm reduction. As a recovering alcoholic, anybody who might be, right? Easy to take a drink of vodka at six o'clock in the morning, and another one at seven, and another one at eight. Harm reduction is a process where they, where it is said, get them to beer. A beer in the morning, a beer at seven, a beer at eight. You've substituted vodka with beer. It is less harmful. So, if that is the very same concept in harm reduction, people who may have been drinking all day, all night, may have a safe place. And we don't know why they are all drinking, right? Perhaps it's difficulties that they're facing. Can alleviating some of those issues that they're facing reduce the amount of alcohol that they're intaking? Or if they're doing meth, or coke, or other harder drugs, is it better for them to drink alcohol instead? It's a very interesting concept, but that is a concept called harm reduction. So it actually follows clinical requirements.
So security, I mean, are they going to have any kind of?
So security, we have, we will have cameras and we will have other types of security devices, but there are no armed guards and there is no security force. Again, this is not a prison. It is not a security facility, right?
I'm not saying it's prison, but you're bringing in, if I may interrupt, but you're bringing in people with, with issues, people with problems, drugs, alcohol, whatever, you just said it. So now you're bringing them in, and you're saying, well, maybe, to me, I don't see the difference whether it's a, an ounce of alcohol from beer or an ounce of alcohol from tequila. I don't care, an ounce of alcohol is an ounce of alcohol, whether it's seven o'clock in the morning, four o'clock, three o'clock, I don't care. It all takes the same in the system, it all does the same harm. But, you know, you're bringing it in, my, my understanding is there are going to be roughly thirty beds, give or take a, a room or two, seven are going to be two-bed, twenty-three roughly going to be single. The people that got the first priority, you said they're mostly going to be homeless and homeless families, we have to need those in the valley. I don't think, I mean, priority's going to be to Rocky Ford or?
The priority's going to be, and this is why that coordinated entry process is so important, it extends out to all of southeastern Colorado. So it's not just Rocky Ford, it's not just Rocky Ford and Lahana and Swin, it is the entire southeastern section of Colorado. And you're absolutely right. When, when counts were being obtained of people who were at risk of homelessness or homeless, the Medicaid eligible people alone were eight hundred and eighty. You're right. This is going to hopefully fill a void, but there is still another eight hundred and fifty people out there.
What area?
My, my concern is what we already have here, we have a problem. Everybody sees it, it was a word, but we don't need to bring in more if we already have to add to the, what we have. The ones that we have that are homeless, homeless, and just bring in people from other, I mean, I'd like to see priority given to the people that are here, Lahana, Rocky Ford, Swin, Basy, whatever, you know, the local valley. And then section eight, I've, I've never had section eight, I've never, you know, I've, I've heard about it, I'm, one of the things I have heard about is, it takes forever when, when you sign up to get on it. So if they're not currently on section eight, it could be a year before they even get qualified, right?
No, not in this process, right? And this is why we're accessing the section eight vouchers through the state of Colorado, and we will have a separate contract specifically for our property. So technically, we have property-based section eight. Those vouchers remain with our property. So anybody who comes in and we have a vacant unit will immediately, if they qualify, there's, there is still a screening process, Councilor Barone, right? We're not letting anybody just come in because they breed, right? There's a screening process. Nicole used to work for me. She knows how many complaints we get through our screening process. Okay? We have a screening process. There is a tenant selection plan. Those are some of those safeguards, right? Again, I'm not a mechanic, I can generally tell you how to do a transmission, but not exactly. Get my drift?
I, I hear you, you know, it just, I, I have a couple, three volunteer things I do around town, the community help out, and, I'm sorry, you know, I mean, as a volunteer, and see what I put up with, what other volunteers put up with, with ninety-nine percent of the people are good, you always have that one bad apple. But when, I mean, people start fires, they get drunk, they start fights, they, I mean, I, I see it happen every week with the things I do around the town. And, I don't know, I just have concerns with, I'm not against it, people go in there, they need help, I'm for it, but I'm afraid of what might happen, you know? Bringing in more.
Well, you're absolutely right, right? I might get into an accident driving home, but I still have to drive. You might drop from a heart attack, but you still keep walking. I get it. We might choke when we go out.
Yeah, we have patients going home, we already got, this is something I heard that's new, that started around the right project, on the right foot, not getting, you know, I mean.
We, my approach, my approach to things is, we have to look forward, and we have to look at the positive aspects of it, and how it can change that next person's life. What has happened in the past and the experiences we see is in the past, how do we improve that, right? And it's not an improvement from one day to the next, it's got to be incremental compounding improvements. Mine is not the end of the game. I tried rebuilding the Melon Air with the hopes that there would be more developments occurring. Where's the rest of it? I'm developing the Osborne with the hopes that there will be more development. Where's the rest of it, right? Mine is the beginning of the process. We would like to invest this thirteen million dollars in this project in the city of Rocky Ford in order for there to be additional investment in the city of Rocky Ford by townspeople, the town, the other developers. That's what I would like to see. And we are helping the most in need as a safety net. Those people who have minimal or no income at thirty percent area median income under or below. Where is the next group of developers or people going to build buildings for fifty percent or a hundred percent? We absolutely have one in the audience, which I encourage, access those resources, they exist.
Not the same resources, sorry about that, buddy.
It's all fine. The resources are resources. I, I'm acknowledging which ones there are.
They're stealing out of the pot, and that's what it is.
I will access them through CHAFA, through Colorado Division of Housing, through HUD, through USDARD, and in market, right? I will access them anywhere in order to help our communities.
So I want, I just want to, mine really isn't a question for you, because I, I, I get what you're doing, because again, I've worked with you and I get it. The resource that he's talking about, that you have access to, like every other person, is section eight vouchers, HUD vouchers, as long as your house is qualified, you can get those just like he, just like other places do. Rocky Ford Housing Authority has an X number of vouchers that they have for this area. They use most of them or so at, at the Plaza, that's where most of them go. A lot of the other ones get issued out throughout town, it's based on people that have applied for them. People are going to have to apply for these just like they apply for the Rocky Ford Housing Authority, Otero County Housing Authority, Lahana Housing, it all goes the same way. He's not taking away from anything that's going into there, I, I don't think. You're not taking away any vouchers from Rocky Ford Housing Authority to fill these thirty units. He's getting thirty new vouchers that are going to be in this place formerly to help people.
Thirty new vouchers. Who do you think you're screwing out of the, I have tennis players for two years before they can get on.
But that, he's not affecting that, Gary, he's affect, what he is, he's getting thirty new vouchers for the area.
You sucked down the Kool-Aid, go ahead and drink it.
No, I know, honey, I, I guarantee that we did not, I did not leave there on great terms, at all. Not one little bit. And it has taken the five years since I left there to build this relationship back to what it is today. So I, I didn't drink the Kool-Aid, and I, I certainly am not going to drink it again.
And I appreciate you letting everybody know, these are new resources. Absolutely, these do not take away from what the Rocky Ford Housing Authority already has, and we are adding more resources.
So Rocky Ford gets so many vouchers, we only get vouchers based on how many people are in the area. The only way to get more vouchers in the Rocky Ford, or Lahana, or Otero County is to have more people here when they do the counts and stuff, that's the only way to get more vouchers in the area. So people are? So people are going to apply for these vouchers. He's not bringing people in and going, here, apply for this, apply for this, come stay here. No, these people are in programs, they're trying to rebuild their lives. They're looking for a place to call home. These are not people, yes, they might have come off the street, yes, they might have been living in their house, but these people are actually doing something to change their life. They are having a job, they've got a family, they're trying to find a house so that they can rebuild themselves. People are not going to apply for those things that are walking around the street doing drugs, that are defecating and peeing and starting fire. Those are not the people that are probably gonna be applying for these housing. People that are applying for these kinds of housing are people that want to change their life, wanting to better themselves. I feel like this is a very negative stigma on these people. Yes, they messed up in their life, so have I, so has he, so have y'all. None of us up here can sit here and say that we're perfect.
Never said I was.
I, I, I'm not saying that you did say you were, I'm saying that none of us can say that we are. So, give these people a chance. I mean, and we're putting the cart before the horse, saying that these people are gonna come in and cause problems. These people are trying to change their lives. Give them an opportunity to do that without putting a negative stigma on them first.
Like I just said, none of them are saying are doing well, but one percent, one bad apple's all it takes.
Exactly.
And with that said, my last question, if you do have a bad apple, from what I hear, from landlords and everything, once you get somebody in, it's harder than how to get them out.
Certainly is.
You get to pollute them in there? How are you gonna get them out?
Same way I get them out, when I get them out of Sunshine Manor, out of Melon Air, out of...
But it can take a year, two...
It can take months, absolutely, yes.
It's a process and it's a pain.
We, we have our law, our, our current laws to, to thank for that, right? And just this last legislation, it's even become harder. So that's the importance of why the screening process for any, anybody who has rentals is so important. Because you can go six months with no rent and continued damages, absolutely, yes. And that's not just because of my properties, it is anybody who has a rental house, yeah?
And I don't mean to be hard on you, we just come to some questions, I've been asked.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, uh, just quickly, um, maybe it's a libertarian view coming out for me on this, uh, I don't think it's any of our business necessarily, like, first of all, we have no authority over this issue anyways, so having this debate over it is meaningless to me. I've been in difficult situations in the past and I've been fortunate to have housing during that time. I was lucky because I had friends and family that could support people, not everybody can. Without housing, I probably wouldn't have made it through it. It's incredibly difficult for people to do that. Helping people is incredibly difficult to do. There is not gonna be a hundred percent success rate. It's not gonna happen, it's, I don't care how good anyone is, but if there's some success, I think it's worth it. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Councilmember Mullins, I appreciate that and I'd, I'd like to, uh, thank you for sharing your personal story. I will share a personal story of my own. Homelessness is an issue very near and dear to me. I've had two family members dealing with homelessness. One due to drug, alcohol, bad decisions that occurred later on in his life. It took me three times to set him up in an apartment before it finally took. But it did, right? My sister had aggressive breast cancer. She lost her job, she lost her house. She had two children. She was homeless except for the fact that I was able to buy a house for her here in Rocky Ford and relocate her from Denver. People have medical issues that create homelessness as well. And if not for my ability to purchase a house for her to live in, she and her two children will be on the streets. These are the type of people we're trying to address, trying to help as well. My sister passed away leaving her eighteen-year-old son and her ten-year-old daughter. Eighteen-year-old son raised a ten-year-old daughter because he wanted to be a man. We are trying to help those very same people.
I'd like to say that, I hear you, I have immediate family, extended family, homeless, you know, issues. But there wasn't a single question I asked tonight that I haven't been asked on council from citizens, so, yeah.
Well, we look forward to whenever we either have a ribbon cutting or a grand opening. And, uh, you will notice that on those Facebook posts, we do not post any responses to Facebook, right? It is a endless pit. So we will not post any responses if anybody asks why we're not. You will see the proof when it's completed and you will see the smiling faces. And I think with our project taking place in Rocky Ford, Rocky Ford is trying to address the homelessness issue before it comes to an issue like Colorado Springs or Pueblo. Or heaven's sakes, let's not get into the Denver issue, right? But I think you're trying to address these issues now while they're still small and people will have resources. I think this is a shining example of what small communities can do to address the homelessness issue that is not going away. Housing crisis is real and it will only get worse. So, thank you.
Steve, uh, something I have to, you know, kind of, hearing, I think, some of those, um, and, you know, some of those questions come up, um, you know, try to do the best to explain it with the information that, that I have and I'm sure others. And, and one of those that comes up that we heard is, you know, it's complicated, is, you know, how do they apply? How can someone apply, who is eligible? What, you know, what, uh, who, who are our neighbors gonna be? How do we know who our neighbors are gonna be? Um, and that's where I think, you know, here from you, it's, you know, it's not, it's case by case or it's, you know, it's complex based on the assessment. Is the assessment or the intake form, um, or the, I guess, you know, the scoring, um, is that kind of a, a public, a federal form, a public form that we can get a template of so we can start looking at them and understanding, okay, these are the eligibility requirements that someone's gonna have to meet? Um, I think that would really help me be able to answer questions, I don't know if that can also help you. Um, and another piece that I heard, um, you know, we, first and foremost, here in Rocky Ford, we wanna help the people of Rocky Ford. Uh, and then, you know, expand throughout the valley and southeast. And I think maybe a way that we can do that as, as, you know, as council and community is to ensure that that outreach is happening and that the right people are getting connected to the coordinated entry points. Um, so if there is any information
Sure.
available or, or, you know, as soon as that comes available, so we can start, you know, I hope over at Peer 404, I think that's gonna be our number one place, hopefully, um, but small town project, you know, any of these other, I mean, our, our police officers, it's their, um, our EMS is their contacting people. Um, if we can start to understand, you know, how does someone take that first step to make sure that they're connected to this coordinated entry point? I think that can help us ensure, do our best to ensure that people of Rocky Ford are, you know, going through the process. You know, not to say that they're being prioritized, but if they know and they're applying, then, you know, the process is gonna work itself out.
Absolutely, so, uh, again, we will probably start the coordinated entry process in about August. But what we'll certainly do is I'll send to Rebecca our tenant selection plan and also the tool that is scored called the ICE DAD. And you can at least get those two pieces of information. And as a coordinated entry process, uh, starts to develop, we will be able to, to outreach and market based on that as well. But it probably won't be until about August. But in the meantime, please have them go to our website, totalconcept.net. Uh, and I think there's like one or two buttons that automatically appear and one of them is I'd like to apply for an apartment or a housing. So click on that and that'll start the process as well.
Couple simple, again, so you said, you were speaking of some study they did where there's eight hundred and eighty Medicaid eligible homeless. What area is that?
All of southeast Colorado from Otero County to the Kansas border and from Prowers County to New Mexico. So it's the six counties of southeast Colorado.
That's, I just hear, and then there's, uh, I, I know you've kind of covered this, but somebody asked it, uh...
Are you asking John's question?
Yeah, I was gonna ask John's question.
I kind of answered it, but...
Just so he feels heard, cause I, I, you know, it's, and I know it's not one that's gonna be easy to answer. He wants to know what percentage of Section Eight is being paid by the state and what percentage is paid by the renter? And I know that's not easy to break down.
So, here's the easy answer. The renters pay about thirty percent of their income. That's the answer. So if your income is a thousand dollars, it will be three hundred, if your income is a hundred, it will be thirty. Those are the best numbers I can provide because it is very individualized.
And that's what I figured, so. How's the Melon Air doing?
Melon Air is not doing well. This is one of those that does not have a Section Eight subsidy and vacancies are probably about forty percent. And so, as much as we hear people saying they need a place to live, they're not applying. So by having a Section Eight voucher at these, people don't have to worry about whether they can quote afford the rent or not.
How would they know there's openings? Is there any, any...
Advertised, we're listed on statewide websites that Colorado Housing Finance Authority requires us to be on as well too. We provide all that information to all the local housing authorities as well. I, I do have to say though, that we did have a person who said, a local housing authority, not Rocky Ford's, is not providing landlord information. So that's not in, in correlation with HUD requirements. So we do provide all that information to HUD people, we do advertise periodically, you may see it in the Rocky Ford newspaper. Um, and, and we also provide information to all of the safety net providers, usually like Social Services, um, Valleywide, Mental Health Services, all of those.
Will, on your, so you, you do a screening to let people in, and again, I'm not trying to bash people, I know we all come through different walks. To prevent problems, will there be drug testing required to apply? I don't know if we're allowed to do that or not.
So it's the same answer as anybody else that rents an apartment or a housing unit. And the answer is no. So you cannot require a drug test for any rental unit. Doesn't matter whether it's mine or whether it's JR's rental unit, right? Does not matter, you cannot have a drug test.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update and, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll check in kind of periodically.
Absolutely.
Yeah, whenever anything is available, please send it over and we'll make sure to disseminate, uh, with council and help to the community.
Will do, thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move over to our staff report, our city manager's report, Stacy.
Okay, so, um, on properties, um, an update on the Eighth Street property, closing is scheduled for June sixteenth. Fifty-fifty sidewalk replacement, uh, program, both contractors were notified of their winning bids, property owners were also notified. This report, SIS Two have backed out, um, as of this afternoon, there's been five people back out. Given thirty days to pay, we are getting questions if we'll take payments. So we've gotta figure that piece of it out and the timeline, if, if they're allowed to make payments. Um, ADG Cloud test migration is planned for June sixth through the eighth, it will not be down during this time. And then approximately two weeks following, around June twenty-first or the following week, uh, final migration will take place. And then that's when the system will be down. Couple things that'll be changed in this process is how checks are printed and receipts are given. So, Michelle's already worked all that out. I don't know if you've had a chance to look, but there is a new bench at Railroad Park, it's the Reggie Ortega Memorial Bench. It was donated and installed by the Ortega family. Um, just upcoming, a planning commission meeting is on Monday the second, seven o'clock. Department updates, the Rocky Ford Fire Department celebrated National EMS Week last week. They are also in a partnership with the American Legion to put out flags and, uh, heard that Chief Wallace was part of that, so thank you. Um, Rocky Ford, the Police Department, um, Chief Wallace and Chief Gonzalez, myself are meeting with Randy Snead from DOLA tomorrow. And that's to discuss some funding, um, opportunities from DOLA for the twenty-six budget. On getting the, the Police Department side of the Public Safety Building done. Uh, Rocky Ford Communications, the tornado siren at the PD has been repaired, it was in need of a new controller. Public Works installed several service lines last week. They looked at a mechanical street sweeper from Ferris, they did the demonstration at City Hall. Uh, the mayor and Councilman Martinez were here for that, they did, uh, provide some options for finance if we're interested, but that was just a follow-up on a directive from a, a meeting in March. Um, Sursacane, the water treatment plant materials have been ordered. Councilman Barone, it's ordered.
I was gonna ask you about that.
Yeah, so, yeah, new, new sections of fencing, some poles and the maintenance gate will be installed there. And then the restrooms at the fairgrounds have been restored. Rocky Ford Parks and Recreation and Cemetery, the cemetery looked great for Memorial Weekend. I know the weather was kind of lousy one day, but, um, it, it, it looked really good. Oh, several months ago, maybe a year ago, the city was awarded a forty thousand dollar Nature Everywhere Grant and they are coming in person to do a site visit, um, June second through the fourth. And they want to look at identifying play and equities in Rocky Ford. So to highlight, you know, where we can add more, uh, places for kids to get outside and play other than, than just Crystal Lake. So that's an amazing, uh, development there. Summer Ball starts next week, they'll play all of June. Rocky Ford Library is gearing up for the summer reading program and Rocky Ford Museum had a tour from the elementary school last week that Councilman Mullins helped with. Thank you for doing that. Uh, update on the pool, I, it, it's all, it's full of water, it's ready to go, we're just hoping that...
We're understanding the second graders are using it tomorrow.
Yeah, we've already...
That, that thing stays, stays as planned and, and, uh...
No school age siblings are allowed.
And, uh, thank you, um, Councilman Mullins for cleaning our windows and fixing my window. I, I sure enjoy the fresh air.
Yeah, no problem.
It was nice in the office today.
Do you have any questions?
So, is street proper or nothing changed, it's just we're finally getting a date to close on that, correct?
The title company finally has a closing date.
It's one to make sure, it's been a minute.
I got it, uh, I stopped in earlier speaking with you today, you brought up the fifty-fifty sidewalk count. We've already got five people, you saying now backing out. Plus, some of the question, or one of the questions that was raised, or a comment I should say, that I was made aware of is citizens, I, I don't know, they're, they're under the impression, some of them are under the impression the city owns the sidewalks. My understanding is most residential houses, it's part of the property within easement.
Correct.
That is why when we hit, when we have snow, it's up to the property, we want it to clean it, otherwise you could be held liable, somebody slips and falls. So I don't know, maybe we can let the citizens, I was talking earlier, maybe we can put something out, yeah, the city does not own the sidewalks in front of or around private homes.
No, us offering to pay for, pay twenty-five hundred dollars towards new sidewalks for them is, is a benefit to them.
But the comment that I read was that you own it, you fix it and we, city does not own it.
No.
That's all outlined in our ordinances.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's really, I, I give...
But I just wanted to put it out there, the, the people that aren't aware, we need to make them aware of it.
Well, and part of that is as citizens, whether we sit up here or we sit out there, it's, it's our responsibility as adults to make ourselves educated of the situation. When I first came to town, I made sure I was educated of the ordinances to make sure I wasn't breaking, you know, it's one of those things that we have to do.
And question on the identify the play spaces, Rocky Ford, when are they coming down on that?
June second through the fourth.
June second, fourth.
So next Monday through Wednesday.
Can we tag along?
You sure can.
I would like to because we're sadly, sadly lacking for things for kids.
Would that possibly include new play structures in certain places?
Um, we're hoping, um, because they, they are in a partnership with Kaboom and Kaboom was the one that built the playground at the library. They didn't fund it, but they, they were the, um, they built it, they put it together.
I could think of a couple of questions.
Well, cause we need, we better take the one down at Badcock, correct? That needs to be replaced.
Play Park.
Oh, play, excuse me, Play Park Hill, not Badcock, the one at Badcock, right? And you guys took the one out at the Little Park over...
Correct, yeah, because it was splintering.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what I was thinking about.
The one, the school district, the one that they're gonna, they're turning out, will that park or the playground stay or is that...
We, we would like to have that conversation with Dr. Snyder.
I have heard from school people it's staying, so... Well, one's right there, Karen, are, are we getting to keep that?
I'll, I'll just, I'll jump in on this really quick and just kind of, so this, this visit is, um, about two and a half years in the making. Um, and, you know, huge kudos to Stacy for leading... Um, and you know, huge kudos to Stacy for leading this over that time. Um, so I'm not sure if you did, um, anyone out here, but there was surveys that happened, there were some different um in-person interviews that happened, that a lot of people um volunteered to, to gather. Um, there was different site assessments of all the parks, all the playgrounds, all of the places where there once upon a time was a playground. Um, and this study was done, kind of, there was a study done in Colorado, and then through that study, it identified um East Aurora and Otero County. And then through that study in Otero County, um it kind of delved into Rocky Ford as being the most equitable um for play spaces. So there's been a lot of work that has happened kind of leading up to this. And uh, yeah, so if you filled out a survey at any point, probably, it was probably in twenty-three, I feel like, um, this is a result of that, and hopefully will, it will lead to um some new play spaces or, you know, some improvements.
This has to do with the GOCO grant, right? With all the things we're doing.
No, this was an assessment done through Kaboom.
Totally separate?
Yeah.
It all, it all, it all kind of plays together, but yet a separate, separate project.
Yeah, it was an assessment done through Kaboom after we built the, the library, and it's just um, whatever you want to call it, divine intervention that now they're partners with Nature Everywhere, so that's a big plus for Rocky Ford.
Kids need something, yeah, I totally agree.
Any other comments on the manager report?
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy.
Alright, we'll move on to our council reports, and we'll start with Councilman Martinez.
Alright, uh, so they had a pool open thirty, thirty-first, I think, for the first two days, that's not the kids.
Thirty.
Thirty, so.
Friday, Saturday.
I may be floating out there, please ignore me, uh, it's hot. But, and then we got, we got the honor to participate and volunteer with the American Legion yesterday. Uh, Robert was with us, Chief Wallace, the Fire Department, all those guys were out, and it's, I wish we could do that more often, I love the look of our town with their flags flapping in the breeze, I just do, it was, it was nice to be able to do that. Uh, my son got to sit with the commander of the legion and learned why we do that. Uh, he was better able to explain it than I was, so that was, that was a great honor for us to be able to volunteer with that. So I thank Commander Rod for letting us do that, and uh get out there and volunteer, you're community people, that's, that's what makes us a community. That's all I've got.
Okay. I'll start with the, the Friends of the Grant, the Art Commission, I mean, sorry. Did have a meeting on Tuesday, May twentieth, uh something, we discussed uh upcoming movies that presently now to be here for two weeks is Lilo Stitch. Upcoming, they're not sure of the dates, but Mission Impossible is gonna be one. Uh, the Last Rodeo, looks like, I guess Mission Hospital possibly the sixth, the thirteenth could possibly be the Last Rodeo. In July, they're looking at Train Your Dragon coming in, so, but the dates are all, it's all wait and see. And if there are new releases, they will be for two weeks. Uh, some of the upcoming events, the cruise in into summer, that's uh first of June.
Seven.
Seven.
June seventh, okay, I'm sorry. And the cruise in into summer, I guess there will be a movie, reading my notes here, in the small town, where they may have a small popcorn and a pop from the grand. Got my notes all screwed up here, the, when the fairs went on, there will be no shows at the theater that weekend because of the fair. Uh, Ark Valley Fiesta Queen, July the nineteenth, at the theater here. Chris, Chris Sandoval, the projectionist, he should be in Texas this week, in Dallas, doing the training for.
Fort Worth.
For Fort Worth, yeah, so, but he should be there, be back, and he does have a backup, projectionist if needed, but he should be able to do everything remotely from where he's at, so the movies will go on. Three D movies, pretty much history here, we're not gonna be doing any more three D movies here. Theater maintenance, uh they got some new fire extinguishers in, the electrical repairs were approved. Uh, waiting for estimates on the flooring installation, floor installation around the concession and stuff from the accumings. There's one opening for membership on the Arts Commission, if you're interested. Advertising rates, the advertising rates over at the theater, this is what's currently in, there'll probably be these rates through the end of the, the rest of the year for uh, for ads. See here, if you want to attend your business, if you want attention to your business, have an event, or you want to promote, tell your best uh person, need to make public service announcements, wanted to wish your friend a happy birthday, the rates will be one weekend fifteen dollars, for the month is fifty, six months is three hundred, annual is five hundred. The people doing the longer ones are gonna be more like your businesses, advertising and everything. Uh, starts as, the ads start at six forty-five, run until seven thirty, when the movie starts. You can create your own, or the, the grand has people where they can help you with for your own ads. So those are going on currently there, you can also buy posters, they have a bunch of posters that they've had for quite a while, I was asking Mr. Seema, uh not just the ones recently, so if you maybe want to go on there, get with somebody from the uh, the board there to go in and look at, I don't know how many years back these, some of these posters could go, but you have an option to buy them, put a bid in on them, buy snacks, takeout, you don't need to eat there. Volunteer, I'll be, there's a lot of volunteers there, if you got free time, go on and help them out. Do a little volunteer there, there's all kinds of volunteer activity around here. Next meeting will be in September, unless something comes up, we're gonna hold off to September for the next meeting. Um, that's pretty much for the grand, Friends of the Grand. I'd like to do some shout-outs. First one is to a citizen here in Rocky Ford, a week or so ago, I was doing my morning walk, come across a gentleman, he took it upon himself, he lives in the nine hundred block of Capolpa, and he said he just got tired of seeing mud and debris in the streets, plugging up gutters, drains when it rains. So he went out with his little wagon and buckets, and he shumbled up all the dirt, debris, the width of a car from the alleyway of nine hundred block there to the corner. Cleaned it all up, took the excess dirt, said he had some holes in the backyard, he had some holes in the alley, he went and filled. Gentleman's name is James Lorenzle. Mr. Lorenzle, or anybody that knows him, please pat that man on the back, said he doesn't even own the property there, he just rents there, from what he had told me, but he took it upon himself, he got tired of seeing the ugliness and the results of it, and did it, and I thank him for myself, I know, I, I do all that at my house, I wish more people would do it, and there's other people that do it, not just him. So anybody that does that, thank you, you know, go out and, you know, your alleyways, everything else, keep clean. Um, other shout-outs, let's see here. Chief Wallace, Chief Gonzalez, EMS personnel, fire personnel, Nick Junior, Nick Senior, Mr. Martinez here, the council member, uh with this, yes, or Monday, going out with the flags, thank you very much, it was all, uh also there was some, uh, a couple of members from the American Legion, which there's not a lot of members in it, so that's why we're helping them. And uh they were there to help us, uh if there were some citizens there, like Nick and myself, I'm sorry if I didn't get the name, but thank you for being there. But uh, one thing that was brought to my attention, like with the EMS and the fire, they're helping, they're assisting, they're giving us the protection with the flashing lights on the street, but at any time, they might be called out on emergency. It would be really nice if we can get the citizens, more citizens involved to help out. These are, you know, Memorial Day, honor our vets, honor our fallen. You know, just things like that, just get on and help them, it took us an hour in the morning, an hour in the afternoon, if that. You know, simple, you know, and just, it makes the city look really nice and you're remembering, given the honor of that, that's what we deserve. I'd like to thank all the volunteers at Small Town Project, they do so much, not just at the, the food bank, with the other city cleaning, what other the, they're gonna do in the uh, the garden, community garden, whatever other things that come up. The people there at the small town, they're always there, thank you for that. I'd like to do another shout-out to Mr. Gonzalez, Fire, Fire Chief Gonzalez, this morning, as I was driving downtown, I seen two young, young kids out in, in the Bay Area, or by the, the benches. Chief Gonzalez is sitting there, working on their bicycles. So I just walked over, see what's going on. He says the kids come over, they ask him for air to air up the bikes, they get flattered, they ask him, and he goes out, no problem, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you. The kids, you know, go in there and give them a place to get air without having to pay for it, you know, helping them fix their bikes, thank you very much, and anybody else that's doing it, thank you. Uh, like I said, these kids, kids need something to do around here, they just, you know, but helping them do that, thank you, thank you, Ray. Chief Wallace, I've had uh several chances to speak with you, I really think the people involved in picking you hit the nail on the head. Uh, everything you, you, our interactions, I think, man, it's, we, we got somebody here that's worth keeping. I hope you stay to high ground, you know, just, I don't mean go past retirement. But he's bringing in things with the, with officers going out, meeting public and, you know, walking halls and everything. The officers meet the public before they're needed, that way, if and when we do need them, there's not a, I mean, there's a little familiarity, and I mean, that could mean a big difference in an emergency. So thank you, Chief Wallace, on all of that, all your officers for, for being there. Volunteer Fire, or the Volunteer, or the Fire Department still needs volunteers, get over there, like the, Mr. Mullins and everything coming out, cleaning all the windows and everything, thank you very much. All of that, getting out, helping the community clean up, helping free up other people at the departments for doing what they're doing. Uh, but they still have to sign up there, they can go, you can help wash trucks, you can clean windows, you can sweep floors, anything to help out, just help out, you know, if it's a weekend or whatever. They do so much for us. American Legion, you know, veterans, you know, if you're interested, I mean, I know Rod, he's there with just one or two guys. And American Legion, any vets, not just Rocky Ford or whatever, if you're close by, sit in and get involved, you know? Uh, I know next month, July or June fourteenth, they're having the American Legion and the VFW, I think in Ordway, are getting together, having a big thing at Crowley County Fairgrounds, it'll be an all-day, free food, games, you're gonna have veteran resource officers there to help the veterans or the veteran families to help get in there and get them signed up, because it is a long, hard process to get them signed up, but once they're in there, they're, they're taken care of, experienced from my father, so that's gonna be on the fourteenth. So go there if you know somebody, if not, take the kids, there's gonna be fun and games, food, so make, make a day out of it. And as citizens, Steve, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, but you were saying you don't do social media, I don't either, I mean, there's, there's too many that just uh, don't even know these people, if they are people, no names, no places, don't even know if they live here, if they do exist. But uh, a lot of nakedism on, on social media. And I was always taught my career was be positive, I mean, there's enough negativity, be positive. And I would just like to ask the citizens of Rocky Ford, if you're driving around, you see a city employee out doing something, give them a thumbs up, tell them thank you, honk the horn, you know, with a thumbs up. They're out there in the hot, in the summer, in, in the cold of the winter, doing their things, and I see the abuse they, they receive on, on social media, not all of it, but too much of it. In, in my personal opinion, and please, let these people, let our employees know, they're doing a good job, they're doing safe, I haven't heard of any real injuries or anything, some go to incidents, everybody has incidents, but thank the employees as, as a citizen, let them know you appreciate them, all city employees, you know, it doesn't matter, but when I say first responders, that's fire, ambulance, police, everything, I, you know, but yeah, citizens, be positive, help out, let people know they deserve a pat on the back and be with them. With that, I think that's it for me, thank you.
You're sure?
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert. People are saying how wonderful your reports are, and they really are informative, and it really does thank everybody in the community, and I want to thank you for making sure to recognize all those people, because we do have a lot of amazing people in this community. Um, I took my daughter to see Lilo Stitch over the weekend, um, I've never taken her to a movie, I didn't think we were even gonna make it through the movie. If you know my daughter, you know that we don't sit, um, well, longer than a few minutes. Um, but she sat through the whole thing, and it was wonderful, other than two bathroom visits. So, um, but all of the volunteers, it was so wonderful to go and have a, have a nice afternoon at the theater, inexpensive adventure with kids. Um, so yes, thank you for everything that you recognize and stuff.
Thank you.
Chief Wallace, yes, you are doing a fantastic job, I see you downtown, wandering around, talking to people, getting out there, making people know that you're here for us, and I think that's probably one of the biggest things that we've been missing for a long time. Um, is that good interaction with the public, so thank you for that. Few things going on, um, that we've got going on at the Chamber. Um, this weekend, we do have our Grown Ups Who Love Us barbecue on Saturday from eleven to one. Um, we've got plant blocks to be decorated and plants for the kids, adults, whoever wants to decorate and plant one. Um, Cruise In Into Summer, like Robert said, is on June seventh, that'll be downtown, they expanded it another block this year to kind of include the theater and stuff, it's gonna be a good time. Uh, June twenty-eighth is the Ark Valley Cancer, Community Cancer Support Group Dinner and Dance. This year, they decided to kind of make it a whole weekend event, there'll be vendors in Depot Square um on Friday and Saturday, and possibly Sunday morning. But um they'll have their uh grease-themed dinner and dance that evening, um doors open at five o'clock, tickets are only five dollars. Um, all the proceeds from that night go directly to the Ark Valley Community Cancer Support Group. Um, they are not associated with any national uh cancer support groups. Um, all of their money that they raise does stay here locally in southeast Colorado um to support families of people who are taking care of their loved ones and stuff. So um they do a lot to give back to the community, um and the cancer survivors we have around here. So come out and support that. Um, and then the following weekend, we have our third annual Freedom Fest, and I have no idea how many years the duck race has gone on, um but we purchased more ducks this year. Uh, this year we had about three hundred, um sold every single one of them. All that money goes directly back into the fireworks fund to make sure that the fireworks happen every year. Um, and that happens in conjunction with the several fundraisers that the Fire Department sells. So this year, we're hoping that we're gonna raise close to that, uh, what is it, gosh, three thousand dollars or something with five dollars at six hundred ducks, so um hopefully we can do a decent, it's three thousand dollars. Um, so the only thing that comes out of that is our prizes, um and we bought some new ducks this year, but everything else goes back into the fireworks fund. The only other thing I do want to mention is there are several poker runs going on over the next few weeks. Um, I think there might be one in conjunction with the um Veterans Event that you were talking about, if not, it's. There's, there's one in Crowley that is uh just in Boscade or something, I believe.
They had to move the one in Crowley.
Did they move it? Okay, but anyways, there's several poker runs going on um over the next few weeks. Um, they've got one, Inspiration Field has one, and the Arkansas Valley Cancer Support Group is also doing one that weekend. Um, all of them tour the entire valley, uh Lahana, Crowley, Ordway. Ordway.
Los Anamos.
Los Anamos, Fowler, and here in Rocky Ford, so um if you ride motorcycle, um get out there and support all of these.
Even vehicle.
Even vehicle, yes.
They allow cages?
They do, I do believe they allow vehicles too, um, but get out there, support your local charities, um and give back if you can. Um, they're always looking for that support, um and sometimes it's just the five dollar in to get a meal on twenty dollars here. It's whatever you can afford, if you can't afford something, most of these places are gonna let you come in and help. Um, but just get out there and support your community, we really have a lot of great causes around here, and everyone can always choose and volunteer, so.
Alright, thank you. Uh, audience has said that our audio is much better, um so that's fantastic, I hope that's true. Hold this in the recording later. I'm the museum guy, so here's a little update on what's going on at the museum. Um, a while ago, we had started moving to what I call Digital Museum two point oh, okay? Digital Museum one point oh is a terrible access database, um riddled with issues, it's actually worse than uh the non-digital museum, which is our old card catalog. Um, unfortunately, it contained different information, so we had to merge those together into what we call Digital two point oh. Uh, we have almost everything catalogued, um that's going up from about nine hundred things to we're at four thousand eight hundred and fifty-ish right now, so everything's on there. Um, the next step of that is photographing everything. Um, a lot of objects have four to five photos, uh right now, we're at about five thousand photos for the museum. Um, I expect to be about twenty-five thousand when we're done. Um, these are all gonna be published online, some of them are actually published now. Um, and they're searchable with other museums, there's probably a couple of thousand museums on this software. What I really wanted to talk about was what we call Digital Museum three point oh. Um, so um two point oh is kind of gonna be like a real transient, that it's gonna be using the same software that we're currently using. Um, but we will be um having a more powerful version of it, we'll be using an API or WordPress or something like that, where we can insert the backend work. or WordPress or something like that, where we can insert the backend work of, um, catalog it into our own website. Um, it gives it a cleaner look, it can brand it better, um, we can make it more functional. Um, we have more freedom to do what we want on it, basically. Um, so that will be after this, and part of three point oh will be also bring the physical objects into the online, uh, presence. Um, there could be like three D walk-throughs of the museum, so you can visit the museum virtually um, online, and also all the objects, when you go into the museum, will have QR codes on them, so you can scan them. Maybe have a video of the curator come up and talk about it, or it just automatically brings up all the information and photos we have on it, save it, research it later if you'd like. Um, we wanna get everything in the museum online, that's pretty two point oh, three point oh is making it much more accessible. Um, I bring that up because we are approaching a deadline on the grant, um, that will it should cover almost everything we wanna do for, uh, three point oh, so three point oh is is it's a next year thing. Which would fall in line with the grant money would come through. We're gonna do three point oh either way, but we are gonna be applying for the Aspire Grant, um, I think it's Aspire, it might be elsewhere, I'm, I think it's Aspire. Um, and it would cover a hundred percent of the funding for this, we won't even be asking for the maximum, um, so there's about a thirty percent approval rating for these grants, and it'd be my first time writing a grant, so I can't say where we're gonna get it, but I'm gonna give it my best shot on that. This really just answers the how are we gonna pay for it, um, upfront, so it'd be really great if we can get that. Um, and the last bit of museum business, and maybe I'm not doing things in the right order here, um, I had asked, uh, this council about the, uh, Hearst Trophy that's at the museum now. Um, I kinda got a consensus, or at least a feel then, that people were supportive of that. And I expressed that, hey, we need to find the right location for it and work out some details. We're now at the point where we feel comfortable, we have a good safe space for it, where it won't be damaged. And we have the security there, the only bit I'm waiting on is to hear back from the insurance company to make sure that not only the trophy, but all items in the museum are properly covered. We've kinda given the city a a number that we think's within a a fifty percent margin of the value of items there, we're gonna get that down to real accurate, um, this year, but so I'd just like the, to see if the council can just kinda give a a general thumbs up if we're okay with Stacy releasing the, uh, trophy to the museum. Um, when we, when we get an answer back on insurance.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't even aware of this trophy till you brought it up, I've never seen it, never heard of it. It sounds like it's valuable with all the silver and everything in it, so yeah, as long as insurance and everything, it's involved now, that's why it's never on display. But yeah, I I'm game as long as it it can safely be held, yeah.
Does anybody have, uh, any objections to it, put it that way? Is that satisfactory on your end?
Cool.
She's like, just saying, you know, maybe we can, um, when it does happen in one of the council meetings, we will make a record of it.
We can have it here.
Yeah, that way it's, yeah, that day, you know, we can bring it here, but we'll just make a record of it, so that way
It's official.
It's official, and we know that it's kinda changed.
You wanna do that in a council session?
It'll, it'll be a loan, I think, so I'm loaned to the bank.
Is it work session?
No, if we can do it in a council meeting, that way just, it'll be in the minutes, and we'll have that for
Yeah, display the day of for that council meeting, and then you have to have a good warning.
Yeah.
Maybe that'll draw some people over to come and come and see it.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah, probably would, and it's pretty impressive if you had us in. That's why we wanna.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so on the mayor's report, um, attended the OPI, October Partners Inc., County Landfill Inc. Board, um, last week, last Monday. Um, there was one loan that was reviewed and approved, so it was a seven thousand dollar loan, um, which did stay in Otero County, and that was for the purchase of Lock Monkey. Um, so Lock Monkey, if you, if anyone knows, they're over in Lahana, um, but the owners were selling, so someone has purchased it, and they will continue offering those services, um, and looking to expand. Currently, they're the only locksmith company, I think, is is kind of out of the area, um, so Lock Monkey is the only provider, and and, uh, we could have possibly lost the business, um, so that was really good there, um, so Lock Monkey will, uh, stay in business. Um, we, our last work session last Tuesday, um, we did meet with, uh, the Mayor Pueblo and, um, the Public Works Director of the City of Pueblo. Um, and that discussion was about, um, Black Hills, uh, electric, um, services that are provided to Pueblo and, um, uh, and some of the others in in southeast Colorado. Um, so, you know, really kinda getting the conversation started early, um, we we learned that Pueblo still has five years left in their, uh, franchise agreement. Um, City of Rocky Ford currently has eleven years left in our franchise agreement. Um, so it's really good, you know, we we had that conversation, kinda getting that started, um, and there will be some follow-up. Uh, Pueblo did a feasibility study, which focused on, um, Pueblo customers only. Um, so they will be looking to do a a larger feasibility study, which would include, um, all the all the people within that service area, which also will include, um, Rocky Ford, so we think we did, uh, kinda ask the question and and receive the answer that um, they will be looking for some cost share, um, from the City of Rocky Ford, and then the other, um, municipalities, other um, places that are under the, um, service of of Black Hills to, uh, move forward with that feasibility study, so sure we'll, um, hear that coming, um, I don't know if it'll be soon, but you know, within, um, due time. But, uh, yeah, if anyone has any questions there, I'd say, um, you know, please, um, ask those questions, or we can ask those questions. Um, but like I said, with this, uh, we are starting this conversation, um, early, and you know, it it is good to look at our options and make sure that, you know, the the citizens, um, are, um, yeah, we're doing our best to to, um, take care of of our citizens, and if that, um, means that, you know, this the way that our electricity is provided needs to look different, uh, you know, we wanna definitely get our, talk about those options. Our other piece of the work session, uh, we met with, um, international, um, the association? IFF, International Association of Firefighters, um, Local Fifty-four Ninety-seven, which is our own, um, Rocky Ford Fire Department. Uh, so they were letting us know that they have formed a union, um, and will be looking at our next steps there, um, on how we move forward. We attended the CML District Six meeting last Thursday, uh, so that was held over in Crowley, um, the town of Orway hosted that. It was at the Heritage Center over there in Crowley, and, uh, just, I wanna say thank you to to our council and Stacy, uh, Michelle from our team here, um, we were the only municipality that had a full, uh, council, or all of our entire seating council was present. Um, so yeah, wanna thank you all, and I, you know, again, this speaks to everyone's, uh, level of involvement, commitment, and, um, you know, the the priority that you place on on, you know, um, how you're serving our community, so thank you all for that. And Stacy and Michelle, um, being able to be there to, uh, yeah, just have a have our full team there and being able to share share updates. Um, yeah, flags all around the community, so thank you to the American Legion and everyone involved in that, um, they did also post up the flags at the cemetery, um, so I know there is a little over nine hundred that are currently out there. Um, that, that's, it's it's amazing, um, and you know, you think of doing something nine hundred times, you think it's been like an entire day, um, it it's like a forty-five minutes with, you know, the people that are out there. Um, so it's really great, and then of course, you know, those flags have to come down, and then the flags that put up in the street. Um, there's a lot, but if there were more hands, you know, that that could take, you know, thirty minutes, fifteen minutes, maybe even ten minutes, you know, if we had more hands on deck there, so um, thank you to American Legion for, um, doing that, and, uh, yeah, if we can put out a call for more people to get involved, um, more of our veterans, um, who, uh, you know, who aren't involved or connected to any of those, um, service organizations, you know, there are, um, you know, VFWs, um, American Legions, you know, whether it's Rocky Ford, or Lahana, or any of them, um, you know, please get involved, and, uh, Rod, uh, the new, uh, uh, founder at the American Legion, he is also hosting the Coffee with a Vet every Tuesday morning, um, you know, so for anyone, any of our veterans, um, you know, following up, listening to this meeting, if you haven't already connected, um, you know, you do have other brothers and sisters in the community, and then that's a good place to, uh, get connected with them. Uh, the bench dedication, so attended that this Sunday, um, so what that was, um, if if anybody hasn't noticed it, there's a nice, beautiful gold bench right out here at Railroad Park. Um, that was, uh, uh, purchased and dedicated by Regina Ortega in memory of her father Reggie Ortega, who was a class of nineteen seventy-nine graduate. Um, Reggie is, he he's an Ortega slash, um, Apodaca, um, so still has a really, you know, really large family in the area, um, and, uh, Sunday morning, um, at noon, everyone was there, and there was a just a huge attendance. Um, there were several people, um, who came from out of state, um, to, you know, to be there, and there were there were, count in, I I guess, at least seven, um, that, uh, were his classmates that graduated with him in nineteen seventy-nine, and he stood in really close contact, so, um, it take take a minute to go out there and and have a seat with him, um, it it says, uh, once a malineer, always a malineer. Um, and then it says, uh, see you later, alligator, so go and have a seat, and, uh, share the, share the moment there. Um, so yeah, thank you to the Ortega family for doing that. We do have a planning commission, uh, meeting, finally, our first one of the year, it'll be coming up June second, so it'll be that Monday evening. Uh, we have, I believe, four items on the, uh, on the agenda for planning commission. Those have been posted in the newspaper, I think I've seen them twice now. Um, also here in City Hall, I can't remember exactly what what they are, there's two subdivisions, and I believe two zoning variance requests. Um, but you can see those here posted in, uh, City Hall and kinda get the details on what it is, what they'll be requesting. Uh, Cruisin' in the Summer is gonna be coming up, um, Saturday, June seventh, so that'll be before our next meeting, so get on out there. And that's all I have. We will move on to our public hearing. So shifting gears here. Alright, the time is now eight twenty-five PM. I'm Lee Dwayne Gray, Mayor of the City of Rocky Ford, sitting as the presiding officer of this hearing. Members of the Rocky Ford City Council, uh, are sitting as the City of Rocky Ford Liquor Licensing Authority. Authority members who are present at the hearing are Councilman Martinez, Councilman Barone, Councilwoman Roberts, Councilman Mullins, and myself, Mayor Gray. Uh, council will be considering an application for a new tavern, uh, within the city malt and spiritist liquor license to Rosio Nestes DBA, the main lounge LLC, at three oh one South Main Street, Rocky Ford, Colorado. The consideration by council requires that a public hearing be held. During this public hearing, I will first call for a report from the city clerk in regards to the application. I will then ask for testimony on behalf of the applicant, and finally, I will solicit input from members of the audience. Um, uh, either in favor or in opposition of the application. Um, if anyone does wish to speak, I'll ask you to come up to the front, um, and you'll state your name and address, and the city clerk will administer an oath prior to your testimony. Prior to opening this public meeting, I must inquire of the body of the body of the council, do any of you have any personal interest in this issue? Can each of you here consider this application in a fair and objective manner? Have any of you engaged in any ex parte communications with either opponents or opponents? And if so, will you please go on record as to the substance of any such communications?
Yeah, there's been no one, a yes. I don't have any.
Yeah, so one no, two yes, one, three no. Alright, I will now open public hearing and call for a staff report from city clerk.
Rosio Mast has filed an application for a tavern liquor license. On April the eighth of this year, I am required to hold that for thirty days before bringing it to your attention. Uh, and we are holding the public hearing today, May twenty-seventh, so that does meet the thirty day requirement. I, uh, have received, uh, reports both from CBI and FBI. And she has, uh, filed every, um, thing that, uh, is required of us at this point. Now, as to the building itself, uh, we're still waiting on, uh, the Health Department, uh, to get, uh, to clear. Uh, we're waiting for our Public Works Department to be able to check, uh, code. And we're waiting for our Fire Department to, um, establish occupancy and to check those issues. But which has really nothing to do with the liquor license. What you you will be, um, looking at tonight is the, um, actual application and the timely filing and hearing. So you can, um, at the local level, approve or disapprove, uh, the liquor license. Um, if you approve the liquor license, she's, uh, they will still not be able to open until we have cleared the building. So, um, that, and that's just reported to the, at the state level, that we will, um, get all of our inspections done, and you know, they won't be able to open until that is completed. Any other questions?
Thank you. Alright, uh, so we do have our packet here, um, and I will, uh, hereby admit all exhibits presented to the local licensing authority as evidence. Um, I'll now ask for testimony from the applicant, if you'll please come up, um, state your name and address, and then
Good night, everybody. My name is Rosio, I'm in the process to open the main lounge, I'm here regarding to the tavern license, like, uh,
And Rosio, real quick, we'll start, so if you just do your name and address first.
Okay, Rosio, sixteen oh five, Sycamore Avenue, Rocky Ford.
And Rebecca, will you do the, administer the oath?
Will you raise your right hand for me, please? Do you do solemnly swear or affirm? Yes? That that the testimony you will give the local liquor authority tonight is true to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes. I'm here regarding to establish license that we are seeking. Our establishment establishment will be providing food and drinks. Food-wise, we plan serving visas, subs, and salads. My plan is to have a sports bar setting with multiple TVs and projectors. In doing so, I hope to provide a different atmosphere that caters to different soundings, and will draw more people to eat, drink, and experiment in Rocky Ford, generating more sales tax revenue to support city services. Our number one priority is providing a safe environment and prevent preventing underage drinking. In doing so, we follow alcohol allows related to serving age, responsible, be, previous service training and reporting requirements. For me as well, any questions?
Any council, any questions, just start down this end?
Hey, thank you.
Uh, how many local jobs do you have?
We're planning like, we're gonna start like with one or two, maybe during the afternoon, but it just depends. It depends on the businesses, requires more, we probably, but we probably going in a waitress and a cook.
Well, just local, yeah, for health, then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That'll be all.
Nicole?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will look to the audience. If anyone would like to speak in favor of the application, please come up. Anyone would like to speak against the application, please come up. All right, the time is now eight thirty-two PM, and I will close this public hearing of the local, the local liquor licensing authority. Get there, Rebecca?
Uh huh.
All right. All right. We'll move down to new business. Jack, thanks for hanging in there with us. If you want to come on up, we'll, we have Jack here, the general manager of the Lower Arkansas Valley Water Conservancy District, and wanted to share with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, city staff. Appreciate your time tonight. I've been going around the Lower Arkansas Valley, talking to local governments about recent growing concern about water, and wanting to, I guess, try to accomplish three things, I guess. One, just to quickly introduce myself, introduce you to the Lower Ark, Water Conservancy District, if you're not familiar, and then ask you to consider, obviously, at a future meeting, a resolution opposing annexations in Colorado Springs that add to their future water supply gap. So I do have a handout that I'll...
Watch out for that wire.
Yeah.
Oh, same trick.
Thanks. So while that's going around, I'll introduce myself. So again, Jack Lobel, general manager of the Water District. I was born and raised in Bint County, so just your, your neighbor down the road here. Sixth generation on the same family ranch. We actually homesteaded there, and I guess we're just too stubborn to ever leave. I did go away and get my degree in engineering, and civil engineering, and did that for about eight years, and then had the opportunity to move back to work for this Water Conservancy District. My main office is here in Rocky Ford, right by the post office, and for the first eight years, I was the lead engineer at the district, and the last four, the general manager. And so that's a little history on me. The district, so the official name is the Lower Arkansas Valley Water Conservancy District, and we were voted in in 2002, and you'll see on that first page there a map showing the Lower Arkansas River Valley and the five counties that we represent, so Pueblo, Crowley, Otero, Bint, and Proverge Counties. And like I said, our headquarters are here in Rocky Ford, and we were voted in, in 2002. There was concerns at the time. We'd seen what had happened in Crowley County to all the water being exported out of Crowley County, of about fifty thousand acres, were permanently dried up there, and really not taken care of, and at the time, Aurora was buying the Rocky Ford ditch here, runs in this area in Otero County. There was a speculator buying around twenty thousand acres in the Fort Lion Canal, which starts in Otero County and ends north of Lamar. So there was a lot of concern about basically the valley drying up, and so citizens from these five counties voted overwhelmingly to form the district, and so we've been in existence since then, and I could be happy to come back to, with, come back to talk to you at a future time about all the different things that we work on. But today, I'd like to focus on one particular issue, and if you turn to the second page there, you'll see a press release that we actually sent out today, and at the top, you'll see the different entities that have passed their own resolutions. But back in February, the Lower Ark District Board passed a resolution stating our opposition to any annexations in Colorado Springs to add to their future water supply gap, and basically just spoke to our concerns about water leaving the valley. You know, as we know, irrigated agriculture, and agriculture is the backbone of the Lower Arkansas Valley. That's why, you know, our ancestors all came here and settled, and in large part, you know, drives our economy. And so, you know, when water leaves, so does that economic, economic opportunity, and so we know there's going to be water that leaves the valley, being a private property right in water. Water is a private property right with a willing buyer and willing seller. You know, folks can sell their water to anybody, including cities, but what we're trying to do is get certainty from Colorado Springs and other municipalities on the Front Range of what that looks like. You know, there's a concern in the valleys that will slowly die at the rate that, you know, Colorado Springs grows, for example, and I don't think that that's fully true, but, but there is a big concern, and, and they do need a lot of water. So jumping to the point, if you turn to the last page, you'll see a map, and the green area is the current city limits for Colorado Springs, and if you focus in on those numbers there, right over the city, these are their own numbers, you know, that they've testified to, Colorado Springs Utilities testified to their city council, these exact numbers, and I have that presentation here if anybody's interested in looking at that testimony, but what they, what they have estimated is that they need one hundred and twenty-nine thousand acre-feet of water per year to support build out of their city as it sits today. It's a dianex another square inch. Their reliable water supply that they currently have today is ninety-five thousand acre-feet a year. So that leaves a supply gap to fully build out their city of thirty-four thousand acre-feet, and, you know, I live in the water world, so an acre foot is common to me, but basically it's a measure of a volume of water. So if you imagine a football field's about an acre, so a foot of water on a football field. So if you can imagine thirty-four thousand feet tall, that's amount of water. It, it equates to about eleven, well, a little over eleven billion gallons of water that they need to find to support their city. And so if you look at these little colored polygons there, the big one that's actually already annexed within Colorado Springs is called Benning Lewis Ranch. That's twenty-four thousand acres. You'll see in the legend that that was annexed into the city in nineteen eighty-eight, and, you know, just like any other city, when, typically, when they annex in land, they're committing services to that property, just like they do the rest of their city. And so that large chunk of land there in orange, less than ten percent of it's been developed, so there's over twenty thousand acres there that are just pasture land, and somewhere around seventy thousand undeveloped lots in there, in that part of the city there. And so a large portion of that thirty-four thousand acre-feet of water they need will ultimately go to that portion of the city once it's developed. There's other annexations down low, you'll see there, but the one that's of particular interest right now is the one in red, and each of them show the, the amount of water that they, that they need to each and every year to support them. And so that's called the Carmen Line Annexation. You'll see it's a flagpole annexation. It's a, between three and, three and three and a half miles from existing Colorado Springs city limits, and so this was actually annexed in in January on a seven-to-two vote of Colorado Springs City Council, and as all annexations in the state occur, it occurs on two votes, so they passed it both times. In Colorado Springs City Charter, there's an opportunity for citizens that don't agree with the city council to run a petition, to force the city council to reconsider decision. That was undertaken by citizens, and they collected over thirty-one thousand signatures in twenty days, which is pretty impressive. The City Clerk then verified the adequate number of signatures. They stopped counting at somewhere north of nineteen thousand, and so this forced a decision back to city council, and on April 8th is where they basically had two decisions. They could either vote to de-annex the property and/or refer to the ballot. They decided to refer to the ballot, and so all, I believe I made today, there'll be three hundred and thirty thousand ballots sent out, at a cost of around a half a million dollars, just for this one initiative. And the ballots were sent out last Friday to Colorado Springs voters. June seventeenth will be the official election date, and so they'll decide, do we want to grow like this? And, you know, considering all the factors that I won't go into today, I'm more focused on the water aspect, but what we're really concerned about is that Colorado Springs is just basically growing, not considering the consequences that will be felt by others outside of their city. Seventy percent of their water comes from the western slope of Colorado through trans mountain diversions, and a significant portion comes out of the Lower Arkansas Valley. They're the majority owner of the Colorado Canal shares that were dried up in Crowley County, so most of the water that used to be in Crowley County is now in Colorado Springs. And so if you look at their own water plan, they talk about, how are they going to get this to be water? Well, they're going to do it through conservation, you know, their own staff, utility staff have said they've really only got about eight thousand acre-feet of conservation left in their system, because they've actually done a really good job of limiting their water use over the last ten, twenty years. They talk about adding new reservoirs to be able to store water in wet times, but right there in the water plan, it says fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand acre-feet of water supply will come from the Lower Arkansas Valley. And so our concern is, is every time an annexation occurs, that thirty-four thousand acre-foot number grows, and that's consequences, you know, will have consequences to the lower valley, and there's really no way around it. To get water, you've got to dry up farmland. And right now, just last week, they filed the first change case, they've been, to change the water they bought in Bint County, so all around Los Anamos, they're buying lots of water, and they just filed their, their first change case for that water, so it goes through Water Court, and they change it from irrigation use to municipal use. And, and so that'll be the first of many. That first change case will yield them somewhat, somewhere between twenty-five hundred and three thousand acre-feet of water, so we're just scratching the surface of what they need. They do have an agreement with Bint County, an IGA, that they signed two and a half years ago, that allows them to extract fifteen thousand acre-feet a year out of Bint County. Again, that'll come from permanently dried up farmland in exchange for mitigation payments. Time will tell how well that works out, but it, but it's definitely concerning. So to get to the point, you saw on that second page, the entities did pass resolutions. Just so I didn't overwhelm you with paper, I printed three copies. I can send electronically, you know, the same thing if you'd like, of all the different resolutions that have been passed. I'll hand that to the mayor here. So just in closing, then I'll answer any questions you have. You can take a look at those, you'll see most of them are very similar. Ultimately, what we're asking is for them to pause these annexations, figure out where this thirty-four thousand acre-feet of water is going to come from, what's it going to look like, what are the base levels of mitigation for the, you know, the cities and the towns and the counties in the lower valley, to make sure that, you know, not only we're left whole, but maybe even in an improved state, which is, you know, which is what we'll be pushing for, but ultimately, to ask them to pause these annexations. And, you know, the, some polling that's been done by TV stations in Colorado Springs shows that it's likely going to be an overwhelming no vote on this annexation, but there's still thirty-four thousand acre-feet they need to find, and so we're not saying not one more drop. You know, there's been folks out there saying that we're saying, you know, you can't sell your water if you own it. That's not what we're saying. If you own the water, you have a right to sell it. We're not standing in the way of that. We're talking to Colorado Springs City Council, and their voters saying, pump the brakes, and, you know, let's, let's not poke any more holes in the boat before we fill the ones that are already leaking. So I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions.
Any questions?
I noticed on the last page here, at the top of your legend, the Amara Development? Last year was, that act was failed. Did that go to voters, or?
No, but thank you for the question. So last July, again, there's two votes. So the first vote, they passed it on a five-to-four vote. The second vote was in August, and myself, along with, we rounded up farmers from all up and down the valley, went and testified, and one council member switched his vote. And if you go on our website, lowerark.com, you can watch those testimonies, they're pretty emotional, and then at the end of that video, you'll see where this council member was interviewed the next day by local news, TV news, where he said in large part, the reason he switched his vote was because of our testimony. So it actually didn't end up going to voters, because it failed on the second vote, but it was the same developer as the...
Yeah, it was almost, it was over twice the water.
Exactly, yep. Yeah, that was a little lack of... Sorry, go ahead.
Is there a similar situation going on at this Southern Colorado rail park, or is that one that you passed?
Yeah. Good question. Yeah, that was annexed in April, and that is an industrial park, and it'll add a rail spur line or whatever, but no, that was approved unanimously by their city council.
Okay, so it's not residential, so it, so it passed a little bit differently?
Yeah, and we didn't take a, a public stance against that. Yeah. Yep, and the only one that's not really part of Colorado Springs, now that we're looking at them, is the, kind of the light blue one there, called the Kane Ranch. So this same developer, the, the blue one, the Southern Rail that you just brought up is a separate developer. All the others that are not annexed yet are the same developer, but that light blue one was actually, that's called the Kane Ranch, that was annexed by the City of Fountain in 2008. The City of Fountain turned around and told the developer, you know, we, we don't have any water for that, and so the developer said, well, de-annex it, and the City of Fountain said, no. The developer sued, and in two, 2023, El Paso County District Court Judge sided with the City of Fountain, so it's, that land is now stuck in the City of Fountain with, with no water, so they're looking at like solar park, or solar farm and stuff like that, but, but that's all the same developer.
So there's no houses that have been built out there due to that?
Correct. Yep, they don't have water, and that's the difference. You know, Fountain has said, we don't have the water, so we're not going to build, you know, until we definitely have water for the full development.
Yep. I have a comment, it just, I don't know a lot about water law and everything, water rights, I know very little, but from the Fountain Creek, from Fountain to where it flows into the Arkansas. I'm, the area, the thirty miles, whatever it is from Springs to there, I understand some of that water's got to go out to ranchers, farmers, whatever, along the river there, but let them keep the Fountain. I mean, I've seen where that water comes into the Arkansas. The Arkansas is nice, clear water. That comes in, and that's muddy, polluted, I mean, the chemicals. Let them keep it. How much water are we going to get from there?
Yeah, I mean, great point. We at the district actually sued the City of Colorado Springs back in two thousand, well, we filed a, an intent to sue over Fountain Creek, because they had allowed their developers to basically not follow their own guidelines, and so every time there was a storm, I mean, the E. coli levels, everything were terrible, and so then the EPA in the state of Colorado actually said, well, actually, we'll sue them, and then us in Pueblo County joined as co-plaintons, and then that ended up in settlement, and there was, you know, millions of dollars of fines to Colorado Springs Utilities in the form of the settlement. But you bring up a good point, because the more they grow, the more impervious surface they have in parking lots and rooftops and whatnot, the more, when it rains, it's just washing away all that, and you can look up on Google Earth, and you can see the color of the water, like you said, I mean, it's just filthy coming in, and the USGS studies have shown that the bed of the Arkansas River in that area and all the way down to Lhanna is raised about two feet every ten years of sediment that's just washing out of Fountain Creek. Another concern with these water transfers is, you know, they're buying, Colorado Springs is buying water in Bint County right now, like I mentioned. Well, as you go from Pueblo to the Kansas State Line, the water quality gets worse and worse and worse. A concern we have is they're buying water there, but they don't take those molecules of water. They'll take it out of Pueblo Reservoir. You know, they have two pipelines that pump out of Pueblo Reservoir that go north, Southern Delivery System and the Fountain Valley Conduit, and so, you know, it doesn't take a genius to figure out that when you pull lots of clean water out of the system, the rest of the river is going to degrade in water quality. And so, you know, we've talked to them about, let's, let's find ways to mitigate that, hopefully outside of the courtroom, you know, but we're prepared to, to deal with that and through the Water Court if we need to.
They can go down over by Buttes and store that water there and use it as they need it. Just personal opinion.
Yeah, and there was actually a study, I don't, I don't want to take too much of your time, but there was a study that looked at putting a fountain on, or a dam on Fountain Creek, and there was water rights concerns, because those raindrops that land there, farmers use down here to irrigate, even if, you know, the water's dirty, but it was too expensive. They had to move an interstate and two rail, rail lines. But yeah, that, that's been a growing issue at Fountain Creek, definitely. Other questions? Lots of questions.
So I, I support this.
So, I, I support this, of course, I support, I support water, I grew up in Bint County myself.
Oh, yeah.
Ultimately, we can't stop those people from selling their water, though, correct?
That's right.
Sadly, it's, you know, it's a private home water that they can sell to Rocky Ford to Springs if they want. So, how do we combat that? How do we make sure? I mean, this is one little piece, we're fighting one little, you know, subdivision. Is there a way to, to take this to where we can set something in stone that protects us longer term than having to do this for a couple of years?
So, there are different tools, unfortunately, there's no silver bullet. We have a program that we've, we've tried to prove the concept of, which I think we have small scale, for folks that are interested in profiting off of their water, but not selling it and leasing it.
Right.
You know, rather than, like I said, rather than selling the cow, why not sell the milk? You know, so the cow wants to sell the milk forever. Cities aren't that interested, they want control, they're used to having control and ownership. Colorado Springs is participating in a, in a small leasing project on the Catlin Canal right here in our neighborhood here. But they've said, you know, time and time again, we want to own it. We can't build out a subdivision on temporary leased water. So, we've talked about perpetual leasing, haven't got a whole lot of traction there. So, anyway, that's one tool we've tried to prove the concept of. Another one, we have conservation easements, we have a land trust, we have about sixty almost conservation easement that permanently tie the water to the land. But they all, they, they all have an ability to lease three out of ten years. And so, that's another avenue. You know, what we, what we found at the district is, you know, we can't stop water sales or that, that's not what we're in the business to do. But we can, you know, get to the Colorado Springs voters and city council members and say, is this really what you want? Do you really want to just close your eyes and grow until there's no more water? Or do you want to live within your water means and go, okay, here's a minute? Because across the world, including, including the Western U.S., there are cities that this is the amount of water they have and they have to live with on that. You know, and, and we're, you know, I, I just don't want us to be the, the place that they can, you know, take the water until we're gone. And so, unfortunately, there's no silver bullet solution. But, you know, that's, that's my job is to, to find those little places where we can, you know, maybe move the needle a little bit. Yeah.
All right, well, yeah, thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight. Couple of things that I wanted to, I can just kind of comment on from our side. You know, following along with this, you know, did watch those votes earlier this year and then the second one coming up. You know, and remember hearing some of, I think what it was, Councilman Hengem might be, and Donaldson, you know, just talking about that, that sustainable and responsible growth. And, you know, they also spoke to, you know, we have to understand that in order for us to grow, this water has to leave somewhere else. You know, so I want to, you know, appreciate that thought of, you know, being good neighbors, good Coloradans and, and community members there. One of the, I guess, one of the things that I, I noticed on here and I guess maybe it might answer itself, but the city of Los Anamis and Bint County is, are they, where do they have in this?
Yeah, good question. So, just to kind of go down the list, City of Lamar, this was on their agenda tonight to pass, or their city council to pass a resolution. So, assuming it all went well there, that passed. Los Anamis is in the works. And then Fowler is also having discussions about it, sounds favorable. Bint County feels like their hands are a little tied. They have that IGA with Colorado Springs Utilities and it puts a lot of limits on them on, you know, they can't oppose Colorado Springs Water Court application, so on and so forth. My understanding from them is their legal counsel suggested that they probably shouldn't pass this resolution, even though, you know, you speak to them one-on-one and they're in favor of it for fear of violating that IGA. Yep. Also, on the docket to speak to Public County Commissioners too, just to kind of wrap that up, yeah.
I guess the, the timeline of this, we're hearing that the vote will be coming up June seventeen. So, is there, I guess, with the, the timeline on any support that they need like from us or any other municipalities?
Yeah, I mean, the earlier the better, but I understand, you know, government doesn't work like that. And, you know, we've already sent this press release out showing, you know, the, the entities that we have gained support from. I think it, it's important to show our neighbors in Colorado Springs, the voters in Colorado Springs that, that, that we are concerned about this. And the more local governments that we can get to join this, I think the more powerful it is. But I guess there's no real hard date. I mean, even if it came two months from now, it would still be great to show that, you know, we're standing together in this concern. Yeah, and to your point, Council Member Hengem, I appreciate her and Donaldson's comments, and she actually used the word carrying capacity or the phrase. She said something to the effect of, we're the canary in the coal mine right now. There is a lot of the world and, you know, and obviously the Western United States watching us right now because this has got a lot of publicity. I mean, the Denver Post, it was on the front page of the Sunday Denver Post a month ago, this whole situation. And she said, we're the canary in the coal mine and we need to have a discussion about carrying capacity. And I just really appreciated those comments for somebody that, you know, in that leadership position, just to acknowledge that, you know, we can't just close our eyes and develop and just think there's going to be water there because that's not a guarantee.
I think one thing we'll tell when Crowley County did learn from Denver, we're buying, it's not just the water, it's your tax base, it's everything else. I mean, we lost so much down here in this valley besides the water.
Right.
By going with all your, your implements, all your farmers, ranchers, you know, they're no longer doing that, businesses shut down. School districts lose taxes, I mean, it's, it's just snowballs.
Right.
It's a lot more than the water.
No doubt. Yep, it's, yeah, it's, it's kind of our everything. I mean, without the water, we're not here.
Yeah.
So.
Just driving down.
Yeah, and, you know, I need to be careful to, to make sure and say that what Colorado Springs is doing in Bint Camp County now is not a flat buy and dry like they did in Crowley County. They're buying, well, this most recent change case, they're permanently drying up roughly thirty percent of the several thousand acres that are part of that and seventy percent will stay in farming. So, that is a step in the right direction. But again, thirty-four thousand acre feet is a lot of water. And I have, the, the question hasn't been answered back to me in, in the fact that where's this going to come from and what's it going to look like? So.
Well, I, I for one support anything we can do to protect our water. I, we, we live down on one ninety-fourth. And if they had not sold the water rights off of our property, I probably would have stayed, I never would have moved into the city, so.
Right.
Yeah, we got to do what we can to fight back.
Yeah, we've lived it in the valley.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and I'll just offer up, if there's any interest in future presentations, just to talk about water in general, kind of water updates, let me know, I'd be happy to come back. We send out a newsletter and are doing that a lot more religiously now. So, you can go to our website, lowerarc.com to, if you're interested to sign up for that. It's not a bunch of, you know, I mean, it's, it's real information that we're sending out, it's not just fancy stuff.
You also did the, the movie earlier this year with the valley, the history of the water.
Yeah, we participated, yeah, Palmer Langton Service, he actually created the film. We donated a significant amount of money to it and promoted it. But yeah, thank you, yeah, that, that was pretty touching, yeah, I remember meeting you there, yeah. Yep. Yeah, that tells a story about, you know, the farming families in, in the Pueblo County area and losing, you know, losing everything, yeah.
Okay, Joshua, thank you. We will.
I like it, I should have brought a whole bunch.
We, we will connect with city attorneys and we'll get a, a resolution and set this for action on our June tenth meeting.
Yeah, okay. Sounds good, well, thanks again, I appreciate it. I appreciate all you're doing tonight.
All right, our next item under new business fourteen-two will be discussion on possible changes to city council meeting times. So, you know, this came out, it's looking at how if our work sessions have moved, could or should regular council meeting be moved down later in the day? So, had a little bit of discussion earlier about whether or not we even wanted to discuss this. So, we'll move that over to tonight and I guess more of a discussion. And then we wouldn't be taking any action on this tonight. But want to kind of start to get an idea of if, if this is something that we want to look at and if so, you know, what is, what is that time? And then from there, we can kind of look at taking action if we can.
No earlier than six.
Six, I think would be a good, the public can still have time to come down if they choose, if they're working or whatever, so.
Has anybody got any or heard any feedback on this? We, we discussed it frequently in the previous council meetings, but any feedback from citizens?
I mean, a lot of the, just to be fair, a lot of the citizens that come in here are also city employees. So, I think that should be considered and they kind of expressed that not having an hour gap, it's appreciated. So, I also kind of wish six would be an official.
Right now, it's two hour gap.
Yeah, she said she can set it five.
It's not like there's, like there's a lack of work.
I was going to say, that gets upset on the weekend, so.
Yeah, I got that.
Yeah, I, I work on stranger hours to get stuff done.
We're discussing it again, I give the public one more chance to make comments, I mean, six o'clock, I would say is good.
Gary, you're a regular attendee, do you care if we move it up an hour?
Six o'clock.
Awesome. I guess I'll complain that, you know, we're losing an hour of sunlight, but, you know, we're also getting home an hour earlier in the winter, so it's a give and take. Tell me when you want me here, I don't care.
Any, any, I guess, opposition or any totally different ideas? There's something six and I think that's kind of what we can, you know, our, our work session used to start at six p.m. So, this would kind of put us, we have a standard. So, if we put this, what we'll do is set this for action at our June tenth meeting. So, we'll be looking at moving the regular city council meeting to start at six p.m. It would be our June tenth meeting, so would you want that to start June twenty-fourth or to kind of just have that start without July being?
Probably going to have a meeting on June twenty-fourth, or are we going to vacate that? All of us are not going to be here.
So, that, yeah. So, that works, we can kind of set it effective July eighth. So, we'll, we'll work on that, we'll give that by resolution. So, we'll work on just that creative and, yeah, just kind of share this that it's something we're, we're taking action on and getting anything back. Our next item, fourteen-three, discussion published murals on city-owned buildings and crosswalks. Talked about the San Diego project, we've seen some information about it, but small-time project received a thirty-five thousand dollar grant from Arts and Society to do a series of mural, to do a series of art installations, which are murals and sculptures. What it is, is it's honoring that cultural heritage of Rocky Ford in our area, the focus on our farm workers. We have identified seven different walls and two of those walls are city buildings. So, one of them is the public works kind of warehouse across this way on night. It faces east and it's a big white wall pretty much right now. The other one is the Bingo Hall at the Fairgrounds. So, we're looking at those and then crosswalks. So, discussion now, wanted to see, we, we, we don't have a formal process for this. So, but, you know, it would be good to do it, to include an official, official level and maybe set the precedence for how decisions come up.
The, the Arts Commission is interested on the side of the grand, the north wall, but basically two conditions. First, it has to be repaired, there's some regard to the foundation and working there. But, and then the other was that if it pertains to old theater stuff. I mean, you just said you wanted it towards, so I don't know. At the Arts Commission meeting, Mike brought up the fact that that north wall needs some repairs and the grand friends are looking at it as one of their projects to put the wall back in better shape than it's in. So, they ask, at least that was consensus of the Arts Commission, that if you're looking at a mural, one, they'd like to have it a movie-themed mural and two, let the grand friends repair the wall before the mural was done.
Yeah, so we moved that in, that wall, that wall was originally in, in the mix, but we pulled that out so maybe we can look at this in another year or two or three and, and, yeah, be able to include the theater wall there once, once the repairs are made.
So, I know you, you're talking walls and crosswalks, but what about our water tanks? Those are up on the hill and we own them.
A lot of them.
I, I, that's, I mean, that's like, that's the dream, I mean, it just, so with, with the budget, we would need some different equipment and if we've kind of talked about it and some of the equipment rentals that we'd be looking at to do those would be about thirty to forty thousand. But what, uh. That, that would be, that would be the dream.
Sometimes class projects paint the water tower too. I can't remember the last time a class, class.
One was just a watermelon, wouldn't that be amazing?
Yeah, it'd be really nice to just put a melon ear on the water tower, I mean.
So, part of the, I talked about the sculptures. And the, the idea of the sculptures is to do, we talked about doing the world's largest watermelon sculpture. So, currently there is a forty-foot by sixteen-foot sculpture in Mesquite, Iowa. I guess supposedly they think they're a watermelon. A watermelon place. So, we kind of lifted that, a couple of things that we picked up is just with that grant, that budget, you know, might not support that, go and, you know, taking that title now. But two things that did come up in the researches, there, you know, there is no cantaloupe sculptures. So, that could be what we could look at. Or maybe a, a watermelon seed. And that one was, that one came out really interesting, you know, because, you know, although actual growth, the fruit was what I think grew, you know, grew Rocky Ford and kind of grew our name. However, you know, the fruit couldn't always be delivered and exported. So, the seed, you know, the seed was, is what was able to be exported all around the globe. And, you know, from the early nineteen hundreds, you know, we have, you know, several seed companies pop up. And we have several seed companies that are sending Rocky Ford watermelon and cantaloupe seeds across the globe. We have companies like Oliver Manufacturing who have, you know, created an industry around seed, around the seed industry. So, that was a really interesting idea and, yeah, I think that's something we can look at too. But on this piece, it's looking at, I guess, how we do the approval for the mural on the city-owned buildings. And if there's any, you know, if we want to come up with some sort of process for approving that or, yeah, you know, what does that, what does that look like?
A question for you, Mayor, is the city-owned building down at the Fairgrounds, would that require fair board approval or anything?
We would, we, we would definitely want to have them input in their kind of pre-approval. It is city-owned property, so it would be a city approval. But we have, definitely want to make sure that we have their approval and their pre-approval on that.
I guess my concern with the Bingo Hall is it's sort of fallen down in places.
Was, and I was kind of concerned when the art project.
Yeah. When the A.L.S. came through, I suppose there was.
I think that was the fair board's concern more so is that that building may or may not be replaced sooner than later. So, any artwork done on that building may or may not, it may not be in that shape before the building gets replaced, was kind of a concern.
Do, do we owe the vote?
Yes, but you ain't paying my pretty building. Oh, on the railroad tracks, okay, I go.
It's block side, I mean, I mean, that's the honesty. That's a lot of, that's a lot of.
Yeah, we, I, I didn't kind of look at us, the buildings that were out there, that, that I think the theme could kind of uplift, and then also, you know, have, have a good view of. I think a lot of them were, were identified. Um, there's a few out there that are private owned, that we still want to have conversations and try to bring them in. Um, but, uh, yeah, the one in the Fairgrounds, you know, one of the things there with, with this is, uh, the art has to remain for a minimum of three years. Um, so that's something that we'd be considering, and, um, you know, the discussion then was that the, part of the Fairgrounds project is, you know, they, they do want to redo the Bingo Hall. Um, but also knowing kind of the, the grant and the funding there, um, then if that funding is gonna, um, support a building, it's also gonna be outdoor structures, like, you know, grandstands, things like that. So, um, that, you know, funding would have to come from somewhere else, and that has to be like this now. What are, what are thoughts on, on process, is it just kind of general consensus? Or, you know, do we want to have some sort of, uh, do we want to have a formal, formal?
I'd like to see a, an idea of art, I'm not a big fan of crosswalks.
Yeah, we won't have, we won't have any sort of, um, visual concept of the artwork, uh, we will have ideas, uh, which are gonna either be, um, kind of scribbles from non-artists, or words, or kind of sentence descriptions, um, but the art will take shape when, when the artists do it. So that is kind of one, yeah, one consideration.
I'm not sure I can support that, I think. As an artist myself, and my son's an artist, we, it shouldn't be hard to throw a quick sketch together, I'm not asking you, so, you know, after these, but I'd like to know what's going, so we're not, it's gonna bring out when it shows up, because then we get something we don't, we don't like, or we don't want, that's. I don't think it'd be hard to quickly sketch, especially in today's world of computers and CAD and A I, and we should be able to get a pretty good idea of what's gonna go on. A building could have to stay there for three years.
A year.
With some sort of crossfire.
So would we, would it be, could we do a process where we stay, you know, with, with, um, I think murals on public owned buildings? Um, it sounds like we want to have some sort of process, and whether that would be some, is it concept design, or what?
Something of that.
Would you, what would you be looking at?
We want to see something, I, I can't just.
Would be a concept designer, or would be something working too?
I'd need something drawn up, like, I don't think that's too much, I don't think, honestly, I don't think I would need all that much, I, I wouldn't like to see something, but, you know, if it's gonna be a mural of farm workers, like, just Google mural of farm workers, and like, show roughly something of this nature, or something like this and this. I mean, obviously, I don't care if it's having.
Would you want a concept design, would you want a detailed design, would you want a written description?
I'm thinking more like stick figures for people, and like, rolling hills and plants over here, and, you know, make more people, or a car, or.
Right, I think not an artist drawing.
Like, your commission, they're just saying, let us fix a wall, but kind of what we would do is, like, what would, what we would consider like.
That's where, that's where I'm, I don't know where nobody else.
Really rough sketches, or a detailed design would be, you know, this is pretty much exactly what it's gonna look like on the local side, um, or a written description.
When I, when you say we're doing murals of the local, you know, farmland and, and culture, like, I envision something like that. Not exactly, but, you know, with, with people and the things around, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's something conceptual, I mean, if I was gonna see a conception of that, I'd be like, okay, so we're gonna drop board here, and there's gonna be a couple people, and some watermelons in the ground, and. It is bit short.
Yeah.
But, I, I, yeah, just something.
If, if you're an artist that's gonna paint a wall, it shouldn't take you more than a, a little bit to put something on paper, say this, but I'm, I'm not looking for any detail, I don't need to see each stroke of the hair that's gonna be painted on a person, but I need to kind of know what's there.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not an artist, I mean, that's not something that I.
So is it same, the same concept design?
Yes.
Or are you looking for something more?
You've already given the artist perimeters of where to stay, what, what you, what you want, you want to keep it here, so we kind of know where it's going. You know, we just don't know what its final draft, we know where it's going.
I mean, I, I, I trust them, I mean, I trust them, I trust the program.
Something with, probably just the artist, when you give them, you're already giving them directives of what you want.
I mean, if they put up something truly painless, we, we can, we can change it.
Yeah, well, do we pass ordinances by, by, uh, a, a general idea, or do we, or they have to be outlined and fleshed out properly? But this is, this is grant money, this is a lot of money from.
It's not our grant.
They are our buildings.
But these are our buildings, so I.
And, and, and by fulfilling the grant, if you, you said they have to be there for at least three years to fulfill the grant, so we want to make sure we fulfill the grant. So we need, I mean, just, just like anything else we pass or do here, it has to be done in a proper, professional manner. I don't think that's too much to ask an artist, I think most artists get you something very good.
I mean, you know, that's exactly what the discussion and question is, so it's just.
Simple sketch, you know what we're gonna do.
Okay, simple sketch, concept design?
Tell you those things firsthand, again, I'm not an artist, I really don't.
Yeah, that's, it's asking what is, what is the process, or, you know, what new thing are we gonna ask them to provide?
Just about my table.
And then would we be looking to, um, do a preview, and then do an approval on June ten? And I could say.
July?
June ten. I could say that the, the Fairgrounds. Well, I guess we could have a concept, so the concept of the Fairgrounds one is a map of the Lower Arkansas Valley. Um, so I don't know if anyone's looked at, um, over in Los Angeles, the, the, welcome to Los Angeles, and it kind of has the city of Los Angeles and some of the landmarks. So if the concept for the Fairgrounds would be a map of the Lower Arkansas Valley kind of valor, including Crowley over to, uh, Ben County, and it would have, you know, but it would have our, um, sugar, uh, silos, and it would have Sweet Tower, and it would have Los Angeles's tower, and maybe Wuhan's train, or some backstreet tracks, correct? Um, but that is the, the concept over there, that one, we wouldn't have an artist's, um, design on that, because that one is gonna be a, um, I guess, a collaboration of all the artists.
That's kind of already giving us a concept of what it's gonna be, or what it means.
The other ones, I can say, so our only other one, I guess, in consideration is the Public Works one, and Seek, um, did kind of just call dibs on that one, so I think we could, um, yeah, we can, we can work with him in what his concept over there is.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, so concept, and then, um, take action on the, on the ten, and then the crosswalks. There's kind of the, any, but, none of the artists have called the crosswalks, I think that's just gonna be done, um, throughout the event. But, uh, what is, you know, what do we want to do there?
Do they really expect a crosswalk to last for three years?
No, crosswalks are not part of the, I guess, the deliverable, that's kind of like an extra, because it's really not gonna.
Well, I mean, I used to see some of those down, maybe closer to the Fairgrounds, or between the highways, going down Main and Ninth towards the Fairgrounds, just so that they're getting them.
Do highways?
Well, not, I don't mean on the highway necessarily, but like, from the highway.
They have to pull down traffic anyways.
To go north, well, yeah. I mean, what about like across, like, from the food market over to small town, a lot of people cross right in there.
Chesapeake.
So, well, so just, just to come back, you know, to, to the crosswalks that are in consideration are pretty much these ones right out front of us.
Okay.
So there is gonna be an event that'll start to be shared out next week, um, it'll be July twenty fifth and twenty sixth is when all this is gonna happen over, over two, two days. They are gonna start pretty quick here, um, with like, whatever prep work they have to do, cleaning and prepping the, uh, the walls, and then, um, putting up like big, you know, base painting and stuff like that, and then that Friday and Saturday, they'll be kind of doing like art, just like how they did the, that were funded in Wuhan.
You said June?
July twenty fifth and twenty sixth. So it'll be a Friday or Saturday, it'll be, um, you will see an application for street closure, all that, it'll be pretty much the same footprint as the construction in December.
I just have a question on the sidewalks, because people have expressed like, yeah, like, it's gonna look cool, right? But, I kind of wonder how long it lasts, and at what point does it start to look worse than if we had done nothing at all? And then do we have a plan for that, is there a point where we say, like, look, the arts got burnout marks on it and whatnot, or let's paint over this? Because at a certain point, it can become, it can go from art to looking like, like animalism at some point in the decoration process, right? So I wonder, I wonder, yeah, where's the idea then? I don't know, I guess if we, if we are doing, like, we're not like, how long do we expect it to last, and then when we think that it's reached that point, like, do we have a plan to address it? I don't know, that, that's just, it's like, it's like ceiling, and when it, when it's done, I don't know.
Yeah, I would say, that's just, we're kind of looking at our street painting, um, it's about a yearish to maybe two, two months.
Which is pretty hard.
And then it would be faded out there, so I don't know if we're, if we'd be thinking about just going out and painting it left, or, or, um.
Just stay out, and, and, yeah, if I think that's, I think that would be good.
For the crosswalks.
You want to, well, just saying, when it gets to the point where they start to look not like art anymore.
I mean.
Can we address it?
Like, the side of his building still has the old signage from a hundred years ago.
Yeah, that's awesome, I mean, sidewalks are being driven, I don't know.
Float rocks.
Crosswalks, yeah, but that's, that's great.
But even if you, like, prepped the road before you painted on it, that would probably help preserve the, the, is it, adhere better to a smooth coat of paint versus, correct, the gypsyism? And then maybe a similar, like, bad idea.
Instead of sidewalks.
Only certain ones.
There were, there were a lot of comments made, when they painted the bridges. On Washington and Major, people were like, hey, that, that's pretty cool, I think it was, uh, it was, people really liked to say, do more now. Unfortunately, Highway fifty and Paul Street are highways, people probably can't do nothing there, the only bridge that I, a wire that has the concrete, I think, that can be painted is right next to Zeke's. But I was talking to you on that one, that one has a plaque, I stopped to read on one of my walks, and, uh, it's for war hero, it's for, uh, I think it was World War One. You know, and actually, after this week, I read that paper, Rocky Ford paper had a really nice article about the two women, they were from Illinois originally, but the woman, they were the first, the first two silver war, or silver medal recipients in anywhere, I guess, but this is back in World War One, and she moved back here, one of them moved here, the other one, the one that moved here, kind of gave up nursing. She became a teacher, but she still worked with people, and, you know, walked three miles to, to help a, a sick neighbor. But, you know, that one there, I would like to see, it could be painted, but maybe keep that one towards military, like, because of the plaque that's on it. And the other, unfortunately, the other bridges are wooden, I don't know, but.
So how many crosswalks are they, and does each one get like a concept, or, so like, this one's gonna look at maybe the Asian American.
Ones that we've looked at are crosswalks on, I guess, to the northeast of us.
Okay.
So going across the street, going across rural park, so those four.
Are really the only ones.
Of just these four right here?
Yeah. Maybe the ones from Kansas City Hall to the fire station, and then maybe at that end of the block, um, but also kind of working within, um, where the event would be, and kind of where the locations would already be.
Yeah, so, but will each one of them have like a, like, each artist will be the concept, and that's, you know?
Kind of, the topic was, um, like a, one of them was like the watermelon, kind of just like the bridges, maybe like red with black seeds. Um, one of them was like the Serape design, it's kind of multi-colored, long, um, another one was, um, I guess, like, a catalog, so people like were, like, yellow seeds. Um, but kind of like that, so I guess like long bars of, uh, design. And currently, the way we have, is we have two white stripes, so it would be like, kind of fill in and have full bar.
I, I don't really see anything on the streets lasting over a year, year and a half with traffic, I mean, I, I've actually seen where something was put down, they put sill on it, and within a year, you could, you could tell, but you really got a stroke to see what it is, what it is. It just, I'm, and that's on the streets, that's not very well traveled.
I'll, I'll ask Chief Wallace, I guess, from, from your perspective, the public safety, or, you know, if it's traffic, um, do you have any comments in regards to crosswalk art?
Yeah, I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea, uh, we may consider, especially during that time period, having signs posted reminding owners that there are crosswalks at those locations. Uh, and reminding folks, maybe through social media or other means, that pedestrians have the right way at crosswalks, we're seeing a little bit of an issue with that, especially on Main Street here by the, you know, City Hall, so, uh, good idea, but maybe we can see, we can get some signs.
So I have, we'll look at the, uh, we'll have a concept design submitted, and then, if you have a formal action, do it as a formal action, um. I don't know, Dan, if you're on with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Would, would, uh, you know, this is some, so we're talking about kind of a, just a process for approving, um, murals art on public, uh, public owned spaces, so talking about crosswalks and talking about, uh, a couple buildings, um, we, we have no process for this. Um, would this be something if we wanted to approve and kind of set precedent, create a process that we do by resolution, or would it just be a, a?
Dan, can you give us just one moment, we, we're having some audio issues over here, we can't really hear you.
Try, try to check now, Dan?
Coming on that speedo over there.
But now. No, that's not gonna help.
I thought maybe, uh, maybe.
Put a mic next to your computer.
Okay, Dan, how about now?
He's trying to do each the attorney.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Dan, I'm sorry, we're not able to hear, it's not coming in over the, on the room audio.
You're not hearing me?
Oh, there you are.
You're, you're, you're getting a lot better, whatever you did, use that.
Perfect, everybody can hear me now?
Good.
Talk loud.
Um, so, it, my, what I, what I heard is that, um, the city would be using grant funds, this program, right?
Um, no, the, the grants have been. Um, well, the 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 grant funds have been awarded to a local nonprofit. Um, and and kind of on this, it it would just be looking at approval for, um, the murals to go on two city owned, uh, buildings and then like crosswalks.
Okay. Yeah, I I I think it would be worthwhile to do a by resolution, you know? Um, just so, yeah, so it's clear, we have a, we have a record of it. Um, we can identify the location where we, we kind of identify the process.
Okay. All right, Dan, thank you. So yeah, we'll we'll get that put together as a resolution and then we'll also get the, um, design, concept design and have this set for Jingting.
Yeah, and if you would like me to put something together, if you want to send me a draft.
Thank you. All right, Dan, yeah, we'll do that. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Any other, anything else on this one?
Sounds like you have a lot more fleshed out than we do.
There is also a cert, there was a design workshop, um, this last Friday. Um, and there is a survey open. So it's on the small town website or Facebook or Art Project or, um, lasavialproject.org. Um, and it's still open. It's gonna stay open until, um, the artists are gonna have a art design workshop and that's where they're gonna take all of the ideas, which right now all the ideas are basically words. Um, there was, I think, two people, there was one person who was an artist and, um, two people drew and made, um, kind of like a Japanese, um, koi fish yin yang, um, design. And, uh, and it was a koi fish yin yang catalog. Um, that was really interesting.
Really cool.
Um, but everything else was mostly words and and, uh, Stacy was there. So, yeah, mostly words and descriptions of of, uh, ideas. But survey's open, so you all and anyone else, um, if you want to, um, take that survey and have, uh, your input on, you know, what what that, uh, honoring that cultural heritage of the area of the focus on the first looks like to you. And it'll be open for at least another month. All right. Next item we have is fourteen four and that is action on the application for a tavern liquor license submitted by Rosio Mestes DBA The Main Lounge LLC. Three or one, South Main Street, Rocky Ford, Colorado. Um, the Rocky Ford City Council acting as the local liquor licensing authority held a public hearing earlier this evening. Um, open this up for any discussion or action.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the application for tavern liquor license.
I'll second that. So we have a motion from Roberts and a second from Mullins to, does this need, we need full title on this? Uh, to approve, uh, application for tavern liquor license submitted by Rosio Mestes DBA The Main Lounge LLC. We call the vote.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Gurulei.
Yes.
That's it, Dan.
Passes, uh, and this leave my throat here. Um, congratulations and and good luck.
Thank you.
I hope it was worth the wait. Sorry, man. Congratulations, Jen. Good luck.
Thank you.
I just want to comment on that, that, you know, it's gonna be right here across from City Hall in the former Movie World. Um, and Movie World closed in, I believe, two thousand and six. Um, and that building has been empty since two thousand and six. Um, and, yeah, it is now, you know, we're gonna have another business on Main Street. Um, you know, it was Memorial Weekend. It's graduation season. So we have a lot of people coming into town. Memorial Weekend, there's a lot of people here. Um, you know, we heard about the the bench dedication right here. So there's a lot of, um, out of town visitors. And, uh, everyone was, you know, talking about, hey, like, we're driving down Main Street and we see, you know, this business, that business on North Main Street. You know, the other one across the street that's, um, working on and and all these different ones in the, well, all the shop. And, uh, yeah, just a lot of comments on, uh, what's what's happening here. Yeah, we we love it. Um, so, yeah, thank you very much.
It doesn't even, I stopped in one day just to peek in and it doesn't even look like the building before. It's like so big. He doesn't want to do it. It's good.
Yeah, thanks. We we love you.
We want good food. Good food.
It's gonna be good food. We know where we'll all be for lunch.
Come over for salad. All right. Item fourteen five, um, action. And this one was our addition. Um, so it'll be boards slash commission appointment. Um, and both we're looking at, um, reappointing, both all these are reappointments. Um, the first would be J R Thompson and Liz Fairchild, um, to be reappointed to the planning commission. And then the other would be, um, reappointing Cindy Abert to the pool commission.
Glenn, you need to reappoint me to the swimming pool commission.
Oh, you were.
Okay. Um, so on, J R Thompson and Liz Fairchild, uh, to the planning commission and J R Thompson and Cindy Abert to the pool commission.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we reappoint J R Thompson and Liz Fairchild to the planning board commission and Cindy Abert and J R Thompson to the pool board commission.
I'll say, we have the motion from Roberts, second from Martinez, call them.
Mullins.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
Mayor Gurulei.
Yes.
Can I ask who the, who who went on the, um, arts commission that created a vacant seat that you said earlier?
Alyssa Knapp.
Alyssa? Okay.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry. She's Alyssa, um, whatever, Bernie.
Melanie Bernie? Is it Melanie or Alicia?
Who's married, who's married to the Bernie?
Brian, Melanie is married to Brian Bernie.
But anyway, the names are on the website and whichever the one is has, um, resigned by simply stopped coming to commuting.
Do you want me to advertise or?
Don't necessarily have to advertise.
You have somebody in mind?
Just let people know that there is a vacant.
How will I let them know if I don't?
We'll get it. We'll get Rebecca. Rebecca, do you have any of the waters?
I have water, yeah.
J R, open that bottle.
I cooked them up with some coffee.
We bring our own.
We'll get those, we'll get those, uh, put out there. All right, that's it with our new business. Pass it over to public comment.
Everybody jump up at once.
Do you need a one?
Come on.
No, I'm good. I got.
Steven, you need a one?
Thank you.
Steven, no. All right. Our upcoming council meeting, we'll have our word session June third, um, from two to four here in council chambers. And then we'll have our once regular city council meeting, June the tenth at seven P M. Uh, no other business. Call meeting adjourned nine oh, nine thirty, nine P M.
I have a couple of decent presentations tonight.
How you doing, Steve? I wanted to catch you.
I should buy this.
So you're the lucky boy. Tomorrow a good time for a phone call?
Yeah, yeah. As a matter of fact, tomorrow's a good time for a phone call.
Okay, I'll give you a ring tomorrow. It's been a while since I've updated anything. I, you know, we can get together and plan something on the updates.
Sure thing. And, you know, I don't know what to think about this, but, uh, I will have a walk through.
I got one more getting a pen.
And I'm wondering if my buddy can come in and be like, hey, this is, this is how it's starting to look. So I'll talk about that and I'll like share the dates and I want to do that.
I know. I don't.